Twenty twenty-two to order. And first announcement, closed session. We had two items on closed session. First conference with labor negotiator, negotiators, a direction was given to staff. Second item confidential minutes were approved by the board. With that, can you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll go to public matters, not on the agenda. Discussion items only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff under committee for a report recommendation for possible action at a subsequent board meeting. There is a three-minute time limit. Is there any public comment? May. Morning. Good morning.
Morning, Bill.
Make sure your mic, is your mic on? Hold on just a second. Tap on it now, Bill. There we go.
Okay. So I have sent the board two emails relative to the use of public funds under the A R T. And I call this a tale, T A L E, of free agencies. Two of those agencies decided before they would make decisions on how to use that money, they would have public meetings, they have public comments. This one is from Bahama County, and it talks about having meetings to get community input before how to use these funds. The third agency decided, screw this, we'll just go out and negotiate agreements with all of the employees and make every one of them essential workers and eligible for premium pay. One of the rationales for that was, after all, the, there's been increases in utilities, in rent, in food, and so on and so forth, so we need this money to offset that. Guess what? Everybody in this county has, those same things occurred for them, and none of them get any premium pay. They don't get any stipend. I think it's a shame what you did. Final comments. The other, there's three other items that will need to be discussed by the board and use of those funds. And the revenue loss in the public sector supports the health of the community and investments in water, sewer, and broadband. How are you going to approach that? Are you going to have meetings where the public can come in and give you their suggestions as to how those funds should be used? Are you going to do it like you did the stipend? Just decide what you're going to do and do it? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yeah, just to check, we, we discussed that in open session, didn't we?
The, the other uses, yes, we've, we've discussed those.
Yeah.
Okay, um, is there any other public comment? Anyone on Zoom? All right, hearing no other public comment, we'll move forward with the agenda. To approval of the agenda.
The move. Okay.
Moved by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Brown to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll oppose. Motion carries five zero. Approval of items on the consent agenda, been a request from Supervisor Arneto to address item five E, administrative agency approval of ordinance regarding salaries of elected officials separately. So what I'd like to do is address all of the other items on consent. Is there any discussion on any of those? Everything except for five, five E. So can I get a motion to approve the rest of the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Moved by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Crew to approve the consent agenda except five E. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Item five E, administrative agency approval of ordinance amending section two point six eight point zero two zero of Amador County Code regarding salaries of elected officials other than Board of Supervisors. The reading was waived on January fourth, twenty twenty-two, and this action is for adoption of the ordinance. Supervisor Arneto?
Yes, um, I just wanted to, um, register a no vote on that, and I wasn't opposed to salary increases for electeds. I think they hadn't had a COLA since I think, maybe one small one since like twenty, twenty thirteen. I wasn't opposed to increases, felt it was too much, especially with longevity, so that, that's all.
Right. Any more discussion? Any public discussion? Then can I get a motion on item five E?
I'll make that motion to approve five E.
Your second? Motion by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Crew to approve item five E. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm, I'll oppose.
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. And that deals with the consent agenda. We'll go to our regular agenda. First item up, item three A, Argonaut High School Football Team Adoption and Presentation of a Resolution for the Argonaut High School Football Team. And I'm not going to read the rest of the description because that's in the resolution itself, but if we could get some, uh, Coach Davis and some representatives to come up to the mic, please. And before I present the resolution, I'd, I'd like you to make a few comments, but first I'd like you to introduce the crowd here.
Can I pull this down a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got, uh, our athletic director, Scott Hunkins, sitting in the crowd here. I've got, uh, Coach King, who are my assistant coaches and highlight and film man, and also Andrew Stevens, my defensive coordinator, James Marzano, my line coach. Then I've got, uh, Colby Eckert, one of our captains here, Bo Davis, another captain, Fernando Martinez, Caleb McKellfish, and Josiah Sanders, captains.
All right, thank you all for being here. Um, we're going to present the resolution now and then allow you to make a few comments if you'd like to after that. We did get a banner that is in the back of the room, that's an exact replica of the one that's, um, was up at the National Hotel that we will present to you after this meeting. We'll take it down and bring it by the high school.
Thank you.
These guys, they're, they're bigger than I thought they were. I'm going to go ahead and read the, the resolution. Resolution recognizing Argonaut High School Football Team and Coach Rick Davis upon their forty-seven to fourteen victory over the Corcel Royals in the California Interscholastic Federation Division Six A A State Championship Bowl Game. Whereas the Argonaut High School Football Team, the Argonaut Mustangs, and head coach Rick Davis and his coaching staff are hereby recognized for their historic win of the C I F Division Six A A State Championship Bowl Game. And whereas the Argonaut Mustangs achieved such excellence on December eleventh, twenty twenty-one, when they defeated the Corcel Royals at Dan Barnett Field in Jackson, California. And whereas with everlasting support from their coach Rick Davis and his record of five M L L titles, two section titles, and four undefeated M L L seasons, it demonstrates how the dynamic brotherhood of the Mustangs gained four hundred and sixty-seven rushing yards and scored seven touchdowns, securing a forty-seven fourteen victory, historically claiming the first state football title for Argonaut High School and in Amador County. And whereas the triumphant Argonaut Mustangs earned a rightful place at the top of their sport for their impressive twenty twenty-one season, and also for the example that they set for future generations of athletes in Amador County. We have put the whole schedule on this, um, resolution because, uh, I know it'll be hanging on the wall, I think somewhere at the school, and we wanted everyone to see what the record was that year. Therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Board of Supervisors of County of Amador, State of California, does hereby recognize the Argonaut Mustangs Football Team as honored winners of the C I F Division Six A A State Championship Bowl Game for twenty twenty-one. Foregone resolution was duly adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amador held on twenty-fifth day of this January, twenty twenty-two, and I guess with that, we need a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Uh, who was the first? Supervisor Crew and Supervisor Brown on the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. With that.
Congratulations. Hey, Rich. Rich. Rich, get a picture with these guys.
Can we get a picture of you?
Sure.
That's true, with my quarterback club, quarterback club. He was my quarterback club president when I first started.
You were first guy here. I, it was your second.
My very first year.
Right here on the end.
Whatever you need, Rich, you let me know. I'll get it.
That's true. We did.
All right, congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I want to make one comment before you, you begin, Coach. When I was a freshman at Pastoral Woods High School, um, my brother's team won the state championship for Pastoral Woods High School, the Bearcats. And, uh, it's something you, young men, will never forget. Anybody who was a part of that team and the experience, you'll never forget because, uh, a lot of times it's a once in a lifetime. You think it's going to happen again, but, um, unless you're the San Francisco Giants in three out of five years, it's tough to make that happen again, so congratulations. Would you like to say anything, say anything, Coach?
I'd just like to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors and everyone here in Abano County that's, uh, supported us, and, um, you know, the community support is tremendous in the, in this county. And, uh, I'd like to say thank you to all of you. Uh, my players didn't know what to expect this morning. I told them they want to recognize what you did, and I think they understand it's, it's a big deal when the county Board of Supervisors gives you an award and recognizes you, and I think these guys are understanding the significance of this. So thank you so much, and, uh, hopefully we'll be back soon.
Good.
Congratulations.
I had a supervisor, a fellow supervisor, I think from Mono County, I think that's where the Royals came from, sent me a message, very complimentary about the way they were treated when they came up here, the way the fans were treated. They, they really loved the experience, even though they lost. They, uh, were really complimentary of the football, our football team, our community to them.
Well, that's, that to me is, is a big tribute to our athletic director, Scott Hunkins. Scott Hunkins does a tremendous job, not only with our own programs, but when other programs come in, they're treated with a lot of respect and dignity, and I think Corcel felt that, yeah.
So great job this year, and, uh, we, we tried to get you here for the first meeting. It didn't fit your schedule, so again, we'll get you the banner, so you can do what you want with that at the school, and, um, congratulations on a great year.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Let them depart, and then we'll continue with our meeting. Thank you. All right, we're going to go to item three B, update by, I guess I should ask, was there any public comment on, uh, that item before we move forward? All right, thank you. Go to item three B, update by Amador County Health Officer Dr. Rita Kerr on COVID nineteen situation in Amador County. Good morning, Dr. Kerr.
Good morning, Board. Chairman Forster, supervisors in Amador County. First, let me also say congratulations to the Mustangs on their football championship. Wonderful job. And I'm going to go ahead and give you the COVID nineteen situation update. I was last before this board three weeks ago and a significant amount of activity since then. COVID is currently surging in Amador County as well as the rest of California and the United States. The entire country is at the high red level of community transmission of COVID on the C D C map. That has impacted our local hospital and the region and the state significantly. Sutter Amador's inpatient COVID positive caseload has been in double digits for the past ten days, and as of yesterday was up to seventeen. Of those seventeen, two are not in the hospital because of COVID, but are there for other reasons and incidentally tested positive. They still require additional hospital resources due to isolation precautions, even though they're not being primarily treated for COVID. During the Delta surge in August, the Sutter Amador Hospital inpatient census peaked at eighteen. A bit of good news this time around with the Omicron variant being dominant is that average length of stay has been lower recently, meaning that some patients are improving enough to be discharged from the hospital sooner. Currently, fifteen patients, ten of whom are Amador County residents, are hospitalized or in the emergency room awaiting an inpatient bed due to COVID at Sutter Amador Hospital. Another two Amador residents are currently known to be hospitalized elsewhere outside of the jurisdiction because of COVID. One of the currently hospitalized patients was fully vaccinated but had not had a booster, and two are unvaccinated reinfection cases who had a prior COVID infection more than ninety days ago and are now reinfected and sick enough to be in the hospital. To date, three hundred and fourteen, which is twenty-six more than three weeks ago when I last reported, three hundred and fourteen Amador County residents are known to have been hospitalized for COVID nineteen illness. Regarding intensive care unit availability, Sutter Amador's six-bed ICU is full. Five of the ICU beds are hos, are occupied by COVID patients with four of those five on ventilators. The greater Sacramento area has had fewer than fifteen percent of ICU beds available for the entire past week. Public health confers with Sutter Amador Hospital daily, and our team meets regularly with hospital leadership to provide operational support via the Mohawk or Medical Health Operations Area Coordination Program that allows the hospital to have access to regional and state resources. Regarding individual-level case reporting, I'd like to go over a couple of definitions. Confirmed cases have a positive test that has been run at a lab or on a machine that detects the viral RNA genetic material of the novel coronavirus SARS-CoV-2 that causes COVID nineteen. Probable cases have a positive rapid antigen test that detects a protein on the surface of the virus performed in a supervised test setting, but without a confirmatory lab test result. In certain settings, confirmatory tests run at the lab are no longer routinely done. Laboratories and test providers are required to report all of their results to public health. Suspect cases have been reported to public health and are currently under investigation so that we can re, review the test results, assign confirmed or probable status, and establish the date of the episode and the infectious period for the individual. Self-administered home tests are not required to be reported to public health and are not included in case counts on the local data dashboard. The trend overall is a decoupling of testing from case reporting. I will go over the updated confirmed case totals, which we do continue to post on our dashboard and update twice a week. There have been five thousand and forty-two, which is an increase of nine hundred and ninety-six since three weeks ago, cumulative total confirmed laboratory cases of COVID nineteen in Amador County residents overall, and that excludes Mule Creek State Prison inmates. In the year twenty twenty-one, there were two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two confirmed cases, which is an increase of a hundred and nineteen since my last report three weeks ago, and seventy-six probable cases that did not have, you had a positive antigen test that was observed, but not laboratory confirmation. Year-to-date, in twenty twenty-two, Amador County resident cases, eight hundred and seventy-six confirmed and one hundred eighty-four probable cases so far this month of January. Mule Creek State Prison is also having a surge in COVID infections with four hundred and three new inmate cases in the past fourteen days. None of the patients currently hospitalized at Sutter Amador are Mule Creek State Prison inmates. This contrasts with the surge last winter, twenty twenty, going into early twenty twenty-one, when sometimes half of those in the hospital were from Mule Creek State Prison. The Mule Creek State Prison population is over ninety percent fully vaccinated, and most have additionally had booster doses that is keeping them out of the hospital. If you put up the Epi curve, please, you'll see visually here that after the holidays, Amador County had a sharp increase in COVID cases. Are you able to see the curve at this point?
Yes, we see it.
Okay, great. I can't see it on my screen, so I wasn't sure if you could. The, um, blue cases, the blue lines represent laboratory confirmed cases, and then you see at the top of, some of the blue lines are a green bar, which is probable cases, and so that's kind of an overall reflection of what we know about and what has been assigned for any given week, and you can see the sharp increase following the holidays at the beginning of this year, mostly attributable to the Omicron variant. If we can switch over to the pie charts, please. These show the geographic distribution of cases in Amador County. The pie chart on the left is cumulative total confirmed cases only because that's the official number that gets recorded up through the chain at the state level and at the national level. And you can see, um, by region, the relative number, um, for the various zip codes with yellow representing Jackson, red Ione, pink Sutter Creek, dark blue Plymouth, light blue Pioneer, and the green is Pine Grove. On the right side is representing active cases, which is currently at five hundred and sixty for Amador County. The way Amador County defines active cases, and this active case definition is not standardized from county to county, but the way we define this is these are confirmed probable and suspect cases in Amador County residents excluding Mule Creek inmates that are new in the past ten days, so that means that they're either still in isolation or they're recently infected, so these are, this is where the activity is. And you can see that the geographic distribution is really pretty similar, relatively a little bit lower in Plymouth and a little bit more in Pioneer on this chart. But this shifts over time as to, you know, just where activity is, and right now it's widespread everywhere and really among every age group as well. So, um, this number peaked last week at over six hundred and now is down a little bit as of yesterday's data poll. So far, one pediatric multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children case was confirmed in an Amador resident in late twenty twenty-one, and, uh, since my last update, two additional Amador resident deaths due to COVID nineteen have been confirmed so far this month. Both those were unvaccinated females in their seventies. The total confirmed COVID deaths to date are sixty-four Amador County residents and nine Mule Creek State Prison inmates. And public health continues to express our condolences to all who are mourning the loss of a loved one due to COVID nineteen. Statewide, Omicron has overtaken Delta as the predominantly circulating variant, and this is true in Amador as well. After a sharp spike in cases, the statewide case counts have plateaued over the past week, and just over the weekend, we have noticed that new cases in Amador are also leveling off, but still at a very high level. We just are not continuing the rapid incline, which is good. Because of Omicron's ability to evade immunity, cases are occurring in persons who are vaccinated as well as those who've had COVID before. However, infections in persons with prior immunity from either vaccination or previous infection tend to be milder than infections in those without immunity. Being fully vaccinated and getting a booster when eligible is still the safest way to prevent serious illness, hospitalization, and death from COVID. Those persons who are previously infected, who also get vaccinated, have the highest level of immunity. Additional recommendations to prevent the spread of Omicron are the same as what we should have already been doing. Indoors, maximize ventilation, and currently, everyone is still required to wear a mask when indoors and public. Outdoor activities are safer than indoors, but if you can't keep your distance and you're in a crowd, masking is still advised. Wash your hands often, and importantly, stay home when you're sick. Testing is another key layer of mitigation and is becoming more widely available with at-home options. Last week, the federal government launched covidtests.gov, a website that households can visit to order up to four at-home test kits per address. Also, an allocation of rapid antigen test kits for at-home self-testing were made available by the state, and public health has been distributing those to local community benefit organization agencies for their clients who may otherwise have difficulty accessing tests. The Optum Serve No Cost Testing Site at the Health and Human Services Building off Lower Ridge Road at the back entrance is still open Mondays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays from seven A M. to seven P M. Masks are required at the testing site. The National Guard is here now supplementing staffing at the site to increase available appointment slots for test collection. However, P C R test results have been taking longer due to the increased volume at the labs. Please pre-register for testing at L H I dot care, or you may call one eight 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 six three four eleven twenty-three to register. Those who have appointments are prioritized, and walk-ins will be accommodated as space allows. I'll also note that the California Department of Public Health has adapted the updated CDC shortened isolation and quarantine guidance that came out at the end of December to be applied for the general population of California, as well as provided specific requirements for workplaces that Cal OSHA regulates, as well as schools and healthcare within high-risk congregate settings. Moving to the COVID nineteen vaccine update, again, COVID vaccines are available and free for everyone aged five and older. As of yesterday, over fifty-two thousand six hundred doses of vaccine have been administered to Amador County residents. Over eighty-one hundred Amador residents have had boosters, but our highest priority is still for those who are unvaccinated to get protected. Overall, thirty-three point six percent of the population aged five and older in Amador County have not had any doses of COVID vaccine. The age grade group breakdown of those who remain unvaccinated is eighty-six percent of five to eleven-year-olds, fifty-five percent of twelve to seventeen-year-olds, fifty-one percent of eighteen to forty-nine-year-olds, twenty percent of fifty to sixty-four-year-olds. Twenty percent of fifty to sixty-four-year-olds and ten percent of those aged sixty-five and older. The average first doses given to Amador residents over the past few weeks were twenty to twenty-five first doses per day. Over three thousand Amador County residents. Who are five and older have had one dose of vaccine and still need to get their second dose. It is important to keep, excuse me, complete the second dose of the two-dose primary vaccine series. To have protection against serious illness and hospitalization and get a booster when it's time to stay up to date. Persons who are sixty-five and older and anyone over age fifty with underlying illness are most strongly advised to get a booster dose. The timing for boosters since the last dose is more than two months for J and J. And is now more than five months for those who received either Pfizer or Moderna vaccine. And the mix and match option to choose a different vaccine for your booster than you've got for your primary series is available. The no cost COVID vaccine clinics at the Health and Human Services Building Suite five hundred at the back entrance. Continue on Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays and Sundays from nine AM to six PM. All three brands of COVID vaccine are available for any dose, including for children and for boosters. Visit myturn.ca.gov to schedule an appointment at these vaccine clinics. Walk-in opportunities may be limited and must arrive before five thirty PM and walk-ins are also not accepted midday to allow the staff to take lunch. For boosters, please bring your vaccination card, a photo of it, or a digital verification showing the dates of your previous doses. Some retail pharmacies also continue to offer COVID vaccines and you may see that availability by visiting vaccines.gov. The COVID nineteen mobile vaccination team continues to focus on homebound individuals. Who may schedule a nurse home visit to be vaccinated by calling public health at two oh nine two two three six four zero seven. To update about outpatient treatments that have become available for COVID nineteen. These continue to be scarce and are thus under allocation limits. Two antiviral medications that can be taken by mouth have been granted emergency use authorization or EUA. By the Food and Drug Administration, those are for use in persons with mild to moderate symptoms who have high risk for progression to more serious illness. And need to be prescribed for use within five days of symptoms onset and picked up at a specified pharmacy. A long-acting injectable monoclonal antibody product also has emergency use authorization. For use in severely immune compromised individuals who are not expected to be able to mount a immunity following vaccination. And it is only available regionally in Sacramento and Modesto at this time by physician referral. Only one of the monoclonal antibody infusions, which is Sotrobamab, remains effective against Omicron. And is available at our local hospital for high-risk individuals within ten days of symptom onset. Who are not yet sick enough to require hospitalization. None of these emerging therapies is a substitute for vaccination. Prevention is the best medicine. During this surge in COVID activity, please continue taking recommended steps to protect yourselves and your loved ones. Get vaccinated and a booster when it's time. Wear a mask in public and upgrade to a higher quality mask if you can. If you've been traveling or in crowded places, get tested for COVID. Anyone who feels ill, even with mild symptoms, should get tested and stay home while awaiting results. If you don't feel great, please isolate. And I'd be happy to address any questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Kerr. Board questions? Supervisor Brown?
Yes, Supervisor Brown. We had had a conversation about this before, but what is the percentage of COVID positives that have been vaccinated or boosted?
So the last time I did an actual tally of that was about two weeks ago and we were running about fifty percent. Never vaccinated versus fifty percent previously vaccinated for testing positive with infection. We've kind of not been able to keep up with that for several reasons during the surge. Number one, I mentioned decoupling between testing, reporting and. Actual, you know, data because of home tests, we, we just don't have insight to what the denominator is anymore. So it's really difficult to do that comparative percentage. Another thing to be aware of is that during the surge, we're relying more on the virtual agent surveys for people to respond. After testing positive and we only have capacity to make a limited number of phone calls. And a limited number of attempts at phone calls to reach people and verify their information. When we do a data poll from the vaccination registry, a process called a fuzzy match is used to try and see. If a vaccination record will match on certain data fields, but we generally try to verify that information because the fuzzy match isn't perfect. There are people who have very similar names. There are some people who use a different name when they get tested than they got when they got, than they used when they got vaccinated. They may have used a nickname or a maiden name versus a married name. And so it's really kind of difficult to pull that number on, on an individual basis. But we definitely are seeing breakthrough cases. We are most concerned about those who are seriously ill and that's why we are continuing to track vaccination status. Particularly those who are, who are hospitalized or unfortunately pass away.
If I may add, I'm running for reelection, but I had to go around to get signatures in lieu of. And a lot of the, I, I met up with about twelve homes that were COVID positive up in the Pioneer area. And most of them had signs on the homes that say, we're, we're COVID positive home, please stay away. So those are, people were taking responsibility for what's going on and that was very much appreciated.
That's good to hear.
I don't know if you should have said that. That's a great way to keep candidates away.
Hey, candidates and religious, no.
Supervisor Axe, you got a question?
Yeah, Dr. Kerr, I guess it's more of a comment. I just heard on the news today that Moderna is starting a trial on an Omicron specific vaccine. And then also I've been hearing about Walter Reed Army Hospital creating a vaccine. And so I looked that up and that's kind of an interesting, they're taking the spike. Feathering it to like a central protein core so that you now have this like eight spikes on a surface. That kind of resembles more of a viral particle and I guess they can freeze dry it and. Store it at almost room temperature.
That's the holy grail is that what they call a universal vaccine, that's, you know, a little bit more broad than just one variant at a time. What's really encouraging is that even with the current vaccines that we've got, people who've gotten a booster still have really. Very good protection, particularly against the serious outcomes and significantly lower breakthrough backs, breakthrough infection rates than those who. Of course, those who are unvaccinated and those without any prior immunity. But also more so than even those who had prior immunity from infection or vaccination. That's really the kind of, the best case scenario at this point is to get that booster or people who've had prior infection to get a vaccination and they have the most robust immunity.
Yeah, because neither of these are going to be available till probably the fall, so.
Correct. And by that time, you know, Omicron may not be our dominant variant anymore. Or it might be a cousin of Omicron. You might be hearing about the BA dot two in the news, which is a, some are calling it a sister. Variant to the BA one, which is the predominant one that we're seeing circulating now.
Any other questions from this side?
Dr. Kerr, I have one question. You list the case counts for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Is there any differentiation, differentiation made between the variants and the case counts? Or is it just assumed that twenty twenty-one was Delta and twenty twenty-two is Omicron?
Oh, good question. So twenty twenty-one started out with primarily Epsilon on the West Coast, which some people call the California or the West Coast variant. It kind of, I can't remember the numbers associated with that one anymore, but it was Epsilon. And then we moved to Alpha in the spring and then Delta emerged in the summer. And then as we saw kind of a late December and into early January now, we're Omicron predominant. So those are kind of those respective waves over time, the four major waves that we saw.
Okay, so I'm just looking at it historically, you kind of gave the timelines, those will be. The, how you gauge when the different variants appeared.
Right, there actually are some very fancy multicolored graphics that show all those various. The variants emerging over time and I can, you know, dig those up and send them to you if you're interested. But that's the major groups of variants that have been the dominant over time.
And those deaths that have occurred, do they? I'm trying to figure out how to ask this, but in a lot of cases, there, there seems to be underlying conditions. So those deaths that you've cited are directly attributable to COVID?
Correct. All the ones that we confirmed are a COVID cause or it's a substantial contributing factor. That being said, were it not for that person having been infected with COVID, they would not have died at that time. So there's actually a very standardized definition that's used, put out by the Council of State and Territorial Epidemiologists. That we review every case, we actually collect medical records, death certificates and do all of that review before we confirm a COVID death.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone on Zoom.
I'm gonna take in the room, any public comment within the room here? Okay, we'll take Zoom then.
Go ahead, Jamie, when you're ready.
Good morning, Jamie Labenco, Plymouth. Thank you, Dr. Kerr, for the update. I had a question, you referenced the changes in the guidelines for quarantine being updated for the state. And I'm wondering if you could take a minute to give us some clarification on that relative to. People's requirements for quarantine if they've tested positive versus being exposed.
Correct. Thank you, Jamie. That's a good question. So the shortened isolation and quarantine has decreased the minimum time. For someone to be in either isolation or quarantine from ten days to a minimum of five days, but that is with some conditions. Okay, so first of all, isolation separates someone who's infected from others. So that means you've tested positive, you may or may not have symptoms, but you've got a positive test. Or you've been exposed, you're symptomatic, you can't get tested for some reason, but you basically, you're pretty sure you've got it. You stay isolated for a minimum of five days. That's regardless of vaccination status because it's a, it's an infection, it's a breakthrough infection at a minimum. Or if you haven't been vaccinated, it's a first-time infection. Or a reinfection if you've been infected in the past, regardless. So five days from the day you've tested positive or your symptoms started. You have to remain isolated and then if your symptoms are improving or you have minimal symptoms. Following the fifth day, you could do a second test, a home antigen test or an antigen test. We do not recommend a repeat PCR because those can stay positive for quite a while. But if you test negative with an antigen, after five days, you can be released from isolation. But you are advised to continue wearing a face covering around others for at least another five days for the full ten days. And this was changed in late December primarily to recognize that. Especially Omicron gets transmitted quick, more quickly and people are generally infectious for a shorter period of time. Most of the infection is from a couple of days before you start symptoms or test positive to about three or four days after. And that more people can get back to the workplace, back into school sooner if we can get them out of isolation sooner. That being said, there are a substantial number of people who continue to test positive between that fifth and tenth day. They should remain in isolation and following ten days, you do not have to keep testing to test negative. You can be released after ten days as long as your symptoms are improving. Okay, let me switch over to quarantine because that's what you really asked about, Jamie. The quarantine guidance at this time is. If you are fully vaccinated and up to date with your booster and you are re-exposed. Or you're within ninety days of an infection and you're re-exposed, you do not have to quarantine unless you develop symptoms. If you've been recently infected, you're not advised to retest unless you develop symptoms. If you're fully vaccinated, we do say it's probably a reasonable idea to test on about five days after the exposure. Just to make sure you don't have a breakthrough infection. People who are not vaccinated or not up to date should quarantine for that minimum of five days. Test themselves to make sure they're not infected and then if they're not, if they test negative after that fifth day, they no longer have to quarantine. But again, they should wear a face covering around others for the full ten days since their exposure. Is that clear or do you have a follow-up question?
I would assume that means yes.
Sorry, I was, I had put myself back on mute. Thank you so much. Yes, that's important to employers.
Okay, and I do, oh, in employers' rules, you do have to follow Cal OSHA, which is pretty close to that. But there's a, the, the DIR.ca.gov, Department of Industrial Relations. Has a one-page, you know, fact sheet about what you need to follow for, as an employer. And we also have, and I'm trying to find it on my desk here, a multicolored chart on our website under the isolation and quarantine tab. That has, you know, boxes and arrows that kind of go through all the things I just explained in words.
Okay, thank you. Any other Zoom callers? Alright, any other board comments? Dr. Kerr, thank you very much for your update again this week. And we'll see you again in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we will move to item three C, this Plymouth Veterans Park Discussion and Possible Action Relative to the Update by the Veterans Park Committee. And the Status and Progress of Developing the Park. The main advocate for this that was going to speak has requested this be moved to the next agenda. But we have it on the agenda, so if there's any, anyone that would like to make a few points, now is the time to do it. I'm hearing none. Anyone on Zoom? And this item will be heard at the next meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
Just a comment, Richard, this is Supervisor Neto. Yes, one of the members had some family issues come up, they had, they had to take care of them, that's why it's asked to be held over to a future meeting.
Okay, and we did have at least one person who was here to speak on it earlier, but unfortunately, we don't have a mechanism to. To put on our website when items are, are polled. We'll go to item three D, Amador Tuolumne Community Action Agency for presentation by Joseph Boris, ATCA Executive Director. Updating the board on accomplishments by ATCA over the past year. And requesting the release of the twenty-five thousand dollar annual contribution and fielding any questions the board may have. Welcome, Mr. Boris. Morning.
Morning.
Working? Yes. Sign in here.
Good morning and thank you for putting up the charts. I've only got about eight charts here. There's a lot that ATCA does. I'm going to speak primarily to what we do in Amador County. We do a lot in Tuolumne County as well, including the food bank that we run there. Which pushes over a million pounds of food every year, so. Don't want to step on anything that Interface is doing here, so. So let's just go to the next chart. I just wanted to remind. Some of you, probably more the audience than, than the supervisors. ATCA was formed in nineteen eighty-one as a community action agency and formed under a joint powers agreement between the two counties of. Amador and Tuolumne. And it's the public nonprofit work that we do for not only Amador but Tuolumne. We also do some work in Calaveras and some in Mariposa as well. But from that, and that was really from the nineteen sixty-five or sixty-four Economic Opportunity Plan. From Lyndon Baines Johnson and his War Against Poverty. So we, we've been trying to solve that problem for forty years. At least we helped and I'll go through some of the programs that we do and what we did in twenty twenty-one to help residents of Amador County. So currently ATCA has about fifty different programs. We've got a staff of about a hundred and forty-five people. And we operate on about ten to twelve million dollars a year, of which about five million of that is in, is in Amador County. We've got a fifteen-member Board of Directors, of which two of you, as well as two Board of Supervisors members from Tuolumne County. Sit on our Board of Directors and that would be Jeff and Frank currently for Amador County. And I did want to note that it is our, you recognized ATCA's fortieth anniversary last June, if you remember. And I appreciate that and the resolution for what ATCA has been doing for the last forty years. I just wanted to show you a quick org chart on the next chart. Do I have control of it?
No. There we go.
Gremlin. So as I mentioned, we've got about 50 different programs in primarily six different departments, not including our administrative department. You can see Bob White is predominantly in Tuolumne County, as is our food bank, but the other directors in the middle there are in Amador County as well. Our administrative budget is about $900,000 a year, and the donation which this county offers to us, which hopefully I'll receive that check at some point, goes towards that $900,000 a year administrative cost. So to talk about some of the programs that we're running on the next chart, we have an emergency shelter in the city of Jackson. We have as many as 22 beds there. We generally run on an average about 16 or 17 residents there every night, and when you do the math, it totals up to almost 6,200 bed nights of services that we've offered to help people who otherwise would be sleeping under the stars and probably not at their own choice. We provided 41 households, which is a total of 65 people with rapid rehousing. That's getting them into apartments. We have a number of contracts with landlords around the county to place people into residences if there's one available, which is pretty tight these days. Through our Room Key Program this last year, we supported 74 homeless individuals who were positive for COVID or at risk of COVID, or coming out of the hospital off the street or jail, and got them into hotels for a period of time, mostly five to 10 days. We provided permanent supportive housing to two individuals. We've got Varley Place still operating. That's the 12 apartment complex over on Broadway. And actually, we burned down the debt on that from 150-something thousand to just under 100,000 over the last 18 months or so. So we're getting there. And actually, another update is our board has, at my request, allocated $85,000 from an insurance settlement that we received before my tenure started three years ago to upgrade the elevator in that building, because that elevator's been having problems. And unfortunately, our ADA compliant rooms are on the second and third floor. So we'll be upgrading that over the coming months. And we also facilitate Central Sierra Continuum of Care. That's the four-county-wide continuum, which is where the vast majority of housing funding funnels through. And there's a list of some of the programs, HEAP, APAP, Rounds 1, 2, and 3, and ESG COVID funding. So on the next chart, you'll see that we also operate Head Start and Early Head Start classrooms. I thought I'd show you a couple of cute pictures. One of my favorite meetings is every month on the second Friday, I get to sit through about a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, but about 45 minutes of it is with each of the parents from each of our 11 classrooms, putting up pictures of the kids and what they've been doing over the last month, and it's just an absolutely adorable thing to look at. So in Amador County, we've got four classrooms, two Head Start, two Early Head Start in both Ione and in Jackson. We serve 47 Head Start kids and 45 Early Head Start kids in Amador County. Like I said, we've got seven other classrooms in Tuolumne County. And you can see the cuties there on the left. That's the Early Head Start girls, helping one get the shoe on. I'm not sure if they're going to be able to tie that, but until they get the Head Start, and then they'll get that figured out. And of course, they're entering into the construction world here on the right-hand side, so might as well start them early. We've got Energy Services. It's actually Energy and Water Conservation Services, and it's really focused on lowering the energy burden of residents within Amador and Tuolumne and Calaveras Counties. But in Amador specifically, we spent almost $40,000 on 80 homes, supporting 130 different individuals in those 80 homes, and propane assistance, $140,000 in PG&E utility assistance for 415 individuals, and about $66,000 on weatherization services between our energy water, our energy conservation and our water conservation measures for a total of 82 additional homes. And we completed this last year, though the grant hasn't finished yet. We've gotten an extension to continue it in Tuolumne County. We did complete and exceeded our goal of performing water conservation measures on 162 homes in Amador County. This is the 2016 Water Energy Grant in the MAC Irwin, which includes a portion of Calaveras. But that program didn't actually start till 2019, so it was 2019, 2020, and we finished it up in '21 in Amador County. Some other services that we've got are, which you may or may not know about, is Lifeline Medical Alert. That's the button that you can either press with your hand, or it recognizes a fall on the part of seniors. It goes remotely to calling emergency services, of which seniors would get a call back to see if they're okay. Sometimes, you know, one will just drop the pendant, and they're okay. So, but we served a total of 184 seniors in 2021. Our Foster Youth Program suffered a little bit this last year, especially because of COVID and lots of school outages and things. And so, you know, with all of the shut-ins and, you know, stay-at-home things, it was really difficult to reach a number of the kids that we have been supporting in previous years. I'll say, though, that 2022 has already started out better than 2021. We're broadening the range of kids that we're supporting there. These are foster youth. And that also is bolstered by the revenue that we were able to generate as a result of the charity event, the Swing for the Kids Golf Tournament, which I believe, Richard, you were in on, and Chuck Ily. Sorry, you guys didn't win. You did okay. You did okay. So that was a lot of fun, and we intend to do that again this next year. Hopefully, we'll have a better dinner thing planned. We'll have it mapped out a little bit better. We provided Medi-Cal Services on a grant that we were supporting with Sierra Health Foundation, and we reviewed 223 cases and identified 10 new and returning applicants that we were able to enroll. That service is discontinued for 2022, but something that we were happy to do in 2021. And then we've got Community Services Block Grant, CARES is the COVID funding that we received. And just to identify a few things, there were some others, but $240 worth of transportation vouchers, which we still have. So if you know anybody that ever needs a transportation voucher, have them call ATCA, come and get them. We've got plenty of them left. We supported almost, well, $18,500 worth of water vouchers, which is something new that ATCA did in 2021, and then provided some additional assistance that is paying for lifeline programs for seniors that we were serving. So what's up for 2022? So I just wanted to share a couple of things. So yesterday, I was actually at First American Title. I signed some title papers, documents to, so we're within a couple of days of closing on a new residence, which will be a transitional home. This is paid for in part mostly by HEAP, which is one of the programs that you saw for housing earlier, but partially for whole-person care. And so with Public Health and Melissa Cranfield and Ann Watts, we'll be implementing this new whole-person care contract, which this board approved, or to bring back that funding back into the county, and then we issued a proposal for it, and we're moving on implementing that. So we'll be closing escrow here in the next couple of days, three-day right of rescission and all that kind of stuff. And then we're doing some home improvements. We've got some contractors in right now, taking a look at some things that we want to do to the home. And then we'll be starting the whole-person care services, which is behavioral health services on top of other health and human services that'll be provided to those residents. In addition, we're working with Foothill Conservancy, at least, I won't say necessarily working, I will say I've had a number of conversations recently with Ms. Fisk from Foothill Conservancy to talk about how we can implement a water conservation program through the MAC Irwin. And I know that the proposal is going in mid-February here, so hopefully we'll be doing some more water conservation in Amador to 100, 150 houses over the next couple of years. Those are the new things for 2022, and that's all planned to present. I'm open for any questions you may have.
Board questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I've been on the ATCA Board since I came on the Board of Supervisors, so it's been five years, and I think it's since we had an earlier executive director, and he did a great job, but Joe's come on and really taken the reins and kind of taken ATCA to the next level, and I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing, and I'm very happy.
Thank you.
I think it's good for Amador County.
Mr. Chairman? Morning, Joe. Congratulations on that. Oh, you worked hard on that house.
Yeah, thank you.
What is the population to be available? I don't know if you've got a design yet, like eight residents or 12 or?
So we're looking at between 12 and 15 beds. It's not going to start off at that level because we've got work in half the house that we're going to have to do while we're populating the first half, which will be the upstairs portion of the house. So probably by the end of 2022, we'll be looking at probably six, but then in 2023, we'll be expanding that out to 12 to 15 beds.
Yeah, and great job on that.
Thank you.
You had a question. That Varley Place, what's your occupancy rate on that roughly?
Yeah, well, this last year was really tough, and you know what hit us super hard was this moratorium on evicting people. What we ended up with, so in prior years, before 2021, we were probably close to 90%. This last year, we are probably closer to about 82, 82 to 85%. So, and revenue has been difficult for us, and I say revenue, right? We're nonprofit, so, you know, but it is money that we take in, which is rent. It's actually VASH vouchers plus the rent that the residents pay, which is a very small portion of the overall rent. We just weren't getting it. They just decided they weren't going to pay it, and so we carried some of these people for at least nine months. Now, the good news is that we've been filing for, I'm not forgetting the acronym, but it's reimbursement through the state, make up for all of the backlog payments that we didn't receive. So we're catching up there, but we did lose some people. We lost, oh, one, two, they're passing. We lost a couple of other, two eventually. They were requested to evict, and they complied. So we're in the process right now, and then it took over two months now to get three residences, three of the 12, which in the last quarter of 2021 is what was empty. Took us a couple of months to get those cleaned out, even though there's no smoking allowed. Apparently, people weren't listening, so took us quite a bit of time to get those cleaned up, and we're right now in the process of filling those back up. So we should be back at 100% in February.
Okay. Also, you talked about you're working with Foothill Conservancy to implement water conservation measures and the MAC Plan?
Yeah, it's Prop 1, Round 2, and Drought Round.
What do you mean by implementation? I don't.
Sure.
Can you expand on that?
Sure. So when I was made aware of it by Ms. Fisk, who's the new executive director for Foothill Conservancy, who started, I think, last June or July, she and I spoke, she brought it to my attention just two weeks ago or so, and I mentioned to her that we have done other water conservation programs, like the 2016 Water Energy Grant and others, and that we have crews that are certified for PG&E and water conservation measures. We've got trucks, we've got warehouse, we've got lots of parts, and we know how to do this work. And if she doesn't, we would be more than happy to team up with her to actually implement it. So implementing it is that our crews start off with an assessor who goes out to a house, identifies what work needs to be done, change the toilets to low-flow toilets, change the showerhead.
Let me answer the question, so thank you.
Got it.
Do you coordinate with other agencies so you don't have overlap at the, I'm going to, let's see, what is it, Commission on Aging out of Tuolumne County? Do you coordinate with them? Because they do a lot of the weatherization work and some of the similar duties that you're performing.
Yeah, so we do. We have members that sit on their monthly meetings and...
812A is what I was trying to come up with.
Yeah, right. Area 12 for aging. Yeah, we go to their meetings and support their monthly meetings so that we know what they're doing, they know what we're doing. We actually have different scopes of work, and we can only do certain, we can support families at certain income levels, and so if they're over those income levels, they can still support them.
Okay, thank you. Any other board questions? All right, is there any public comment? Went on Zoom?
No.
I'm going to go to my council. I guess, do we, we need to accept the report then? We've already got this money budgeted, but we need to accept the report as a board?
Yeah, you just accept the report and provide direction to staff.
Okay. Could I have a motion then to accept the?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the report and release the funds in the amount of $25,000 to ATCA.
All right, motion by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Brown. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. I'll carry. Thank you, Mr. Boris.
Thanks very much.
I have one more thing for you.
Most important part.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Very thorough report. All right, move on to item 3E. Is a hot topic for today, I guess, for everybody's here. Discussion and Possible Action Relative Reconsideration Requested by Supervisor Crew of a Motion Taken on Appeal Filed by Mr. Brian Matthews Regarding an Administrative Citation Per Municipal Code Chapter 9.44 Noise Ordinance. The subject property is located at 16957 Emily Way, Sutter Creek. This item was discussed, and the appeal was upheld at the January 5, 2022 meeting. Amador County Code provides for the reconsideration of a vote at the first regular meeting following an action, provided that the requesting supervisor previously voted with a majority. And I'll preface this by stating that we are going to allow for some discussion on this today, but it will come back at our next board meeting because our code enforcement officer did not have enough time to notify all of the affected parties, so it will come back at our next meeting. But with that, we still need to have an action on the reconsideration. Do you want to, any discussion for Supervisor Crew?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Should we, a question, should we take public comment? Should we, a question of should we take public comment? Or but the public comment won't affect this action?
Well, the uh.
If I understand it correctly.
The, well, every action, every item on the agenda should have a public comment.
Okay.
So you should allow a public comment, but um so the public can comment on whether there should be a uh a vote to reconsider that previous action.
Okay. And.
Well.
Yeah, you should, we might wanna keep our comments brief because you know that we're gonna have this on our next agenda. I think the Matthews uh probably were not given sufficient notice, as well as some other neighbors. I know we, it looks like we have a pretty good cross-section here.
But the summary of them after the last vote, um I've never been a real fan of code enforcement dropping the hammer. I feel like neighbors should try to get along and we gave uh both sides some suggestions that maybe, which included checking on mufflers for the, but I was sent video evidence by three or four people and a couple of phone calls that uh not much has changed. And so sometimes government's job is to rectify a situation that they'd rather stay out of. And that's kind of what I think code enforcement comes to. Oh, I think we, I just wanted to bring it back to the table, look at this video evidence and uh take a harder look at both sides of the issue. That's why I wanted to do the reconsider.
Before we go to public comments, any other?
My, my, sorry, my my recommendation, unless you feel like you'll need it for your decisions to to sort of avoid getting into the, you you know, the question of whether there's a violation without the the homeowner um being present. So the the less you can get into the merits of whether you think there's a violation or not and and focus more on uh sort of what you were referring to about whether, you know, maybe this needs a a second look.
Right.
Um I I think that should be the focus for today.
Uh and that's why I don't want to stifle public comment, but I want you to know, though, that this will come back in two weeks and that might be a more appropriate time to go more in depth on on uh comments. So any other board comments before we take public comment?
Well, either way this goes, um my opinion is this is the second time this homeowner area has had problem with sound and I'm truly wondering if you guys need to get together and make up your own homeowners association to to warn people that are coming into your neighborhood of what your expectations are for your neighborhood, you know, because there's always transfers of people selling their homes and what's going on, but it's definitely a specific thing that's going on for your homes. So that's just my suggestion.
Homeowners associations are um can be cumbersome and somewhat onerous to administer. Um I have the Lake Comanche Village Homeowners Association and uh there's a lot of people that don't like it because they put rules in place.
That's what we're talking about right here, right now.
Exactly, exactly right. So with that, I'm gonna open this up for public comment before the board takes action, if there is any public comment today. Yes, ma'am. If you could state your name and sign in for the record, please. Could you pull the mic right over in front of you, please? Thank you, ma'am.
I was going to speak today, but I'd rather wait till the next meeting. That's about all I have to say at the moment.
Probably be more appropriate uh as it's been laid out here.
Yes, that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Any other public comment?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um because uh there's so many people from the community here, would it be wise to accept their public comment today and not comment or deliberate, but just to, you know, I don't know if they're all gonna come back the next time.
Well, from what I heard, our county council say the the main uh Mr. Matthews and his wife are not here and they're the the subject property.
Understand.
Without them here, I don't know if it'd be wise to do that.
I I I mean, I would encourage everyone to come back so you're heard. Um the reason being is because the the homeowners should be entitled to hear what you have to say, because if they're not here to hear what you have to say, they can't refute what you're saying. Um so that would be, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, good morning.
Sign in, hold a sec. It's Lynn Van Tilburg. And my understanding, if I see the screen correctly, Brian Matthews is on Zoom. He is up on the screen. So is he attending? Is he attending?
He may be attending, but if he hasn't been noticed, then, you know, we still have an issue. My recommendation would be the same. If you can't be here at the next meeting, you can ask the board to pick a different date. That's my recommendation.
He hasn't been noticed. Maybe the reason he's not here is just because the item is for reconsideration and then the decision would be made after that point.
I understand that, but I do see that he's up there.
Yeah.
And he's my, he's directly across from us. We saw him as we left, so he had full opportunity to come, but I'll just leave it at that. Um I do um recognize what Supervisor Axe said and I want you to be aware of that we have twelve people in either in the room or that have submitted something to be read and we have one that I can see of the complainants that is um on Zoom and he's at work today. So he made it a priority to be on Zoom and he asked his employer if he could do that. So I I just want you to recognize that because I I think it's difficult for me to go back to all the people that I asked to come today and take more time out of their day. So is there some way we can recognize either with a show of hands and then I can tell, I don't want to put the person's name up that's there, that twelve people are in the room that were the complain- complainants?
Sure.
So they don't have to come back?
Uh, that's up to you, but it's always good to be at the at the table when the decision is made.
I understand that, but trying to get people back, I can't guarantee it and I asked them to come today. I was told to have as many people come today as possible and so that's what I did.
I would think if you wanted people to raise a hand, that's your problem.
That up. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So those affected parties, uh people that uh oppose the motorcycle riding, uh if you could raise your hand, please. Eight, and then with yourself, that'd be nine.
Nine, and there is a gentleman, um well, he can probably hear me. Could you please, well, then he'll state his name. There is a person and I can give you that later that is on there that's one of the complainants.
And he could always raise his hand if he wants to.
Uh.
Say something on Zoom, so.
I will tell you if he does or not.
But procedurally, I think we want to cross our Ts and dot our Is so that any decision we make, as our county council has pointed out, is is legal and enforceable and cannot be subject to someone coming back and saying, I wasn't, I failed my rights.
Okay, absolutely. I understand that. I just would like to make a couple of brief comments so then you as supervisors can kind of review it yourself before we come back at the next meeting. Um, you know, after reviewing, I actually reviewed all the minutes online on January fourth and I still believe that it's disturbing and offensive at any level. Um I will say, and I'll paraphrase, Chairman Forrester, your comments said it affects your neighbor's property rights too and their property values are definitely going to be affected by this. I'm not sure I would buy a house if I knew there were kids riding motorcycles on the property next door. Probably not. It does affect your neighbors pretty extensively. And I will say, depending on the ruling, I'm really concerned and the enforcement, that I'd probably plan on filing a request for an informal assessment review to reduce my tra- property taxes based on the devaluation of my property and will be encouraging my neighbors to do the same. Why would anyone want to compromise knowing full well it will lower your property values? I I bet if I asked every one of you, if you're gonna lower your property values by doing this compromise, you would be like, no, I I can't do that. I don't want to get less than a hundred thousand or fifty. Who put, I can't even put a name or a number on it, but it could be unsellable. So even letting them ride like three hours a week, you would still need to disclose that every year you'd be listening to dirt bikes having their excessive noise, their dust, their fumes, for like a minimum of a hundred and fifty-six hours in an upscale subdivision of Sutter Creek. No one would want to be paid, you know, paid to be subjected to that. To me, it's unacceptable. And then I will say, all sixteen of the complainants purchased homes, and this probably goes back to what you were saying, Supervisor Brown, about CCNRs or whatever, purchased homes prior to the Matthews purchasing theirs. Why should a minimum of sixteen homes have the Matthews noise imposed on all of us? Where are the majority's property rights? Um you also mentioned, um this will be my last statement for today at least, you mentioned you closed Pipey Valley last summer because of the fire danger.
We didn't. The Forest Service did. Forest Service.
Okay, well, the Forest Service did, okay. And this past season, the Matthews were riding all summer long without spark arresters and they put our whole community in danger of fire. And then if they're allowed to ride, because it's a pretty forested area where we're at, if you go up there, um who's to monitor their actions according to fire safety if you allow dirt bikes in a residential subdivision? That that subdivision or this area has one of the highest fire insurance ratings ratings in the state of California. So I'm very concerned, again, I don't want to put the onus on the code enforcement officer or Cal Fire or the Fire Department, but it's a great concern um moving forward. So that's all. And then I will come back again and I will ask my neighbors to come back again, but I'm not sure they will. So we thought by um what Michelle Gallagher said that it was gonna be presented today. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Mr. Chairman, there is someone on Zoom now.
All right, any other public comment in the room? Um come on up, Dave. Take public comment in the room first and then move to Zoom. Good morning.
Morning, yes, supervisors.
Um, how's your arm doing?
It hurts.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got bit by a tree. So anyways, um prior speaker made a comment about spark arresters on these vehicles. Um well, she has hard proof that every exhaust system was removed and replaced and it does not have a spark arrestor. It's not a true statement. That's what I want on the record. Most of these vehicles are stock. They come with spark arrestors, save one, which is questionable at this time. Um I'd like to follow the recommendation of council to move more public comment to the next meeting. Um it was, this kind of caught me off guard, so I'm trying to get the sound equipment um that's currently being recalibrated, so it's up to legal code, which has to be done each year. And we're working on taking those bikes, have them checked for actual legal sound output. And this comes back, as I said before, personal property rights come into play if these motorcycles and ATVs and or other type of side-by-side vehicles are being used and they're illegal, um then we have to take the next step. But uh it's moving a little too fast here for me and I take the two-week reprieve here to be positive. Um I'm sorry the folks have uh have, may have to come back, but as one who's attended hundreds of committee hearings down in the Capitol and driving all that way down and waiting three hours to speak and they cancel it the last second because of a glitch, um I commiserate with them, but that's just the way the system works. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Then we'll move to the Zoom comment.
Um he has since lowered his hand, so I don't, I don't think he wants to speak anymore.
Okay, unless we see your hand back up. Then uh at this time, I'll take it back to the board for action. Supervisor Crew?
I would make a motion if we're ready for that.
Yes.
All right. Now, we have a reconsideration vote of the uh municipal code action that was taken at the last meeting on the property at night sixteen, nine fifty-seven Emily Way in Sutter Creek. Gonna agendize it for the next meeting?
Okay. Hold a second.
Agendize the hearing, is that right?
Well, have the vote on the reconsideration and then you'll, then the matter technically will be before you and then then at that time, I think you need to s- set it for a a a meeting certain and then um uh direct staff to send notice to the parties. So yes, I thi- I think you can, but I I think you should probably separate it, one.
All right.
The first motion to to just the reconsideration.
And my first motion stands alone for reconsideration of the vote.
Okay, hold a second. Moved by Supervisor Crew, second by Supervisor Axe to reconsider the uh vote taken on the appeal filed by Mr. Brian Matthews, administrative citation. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Was a nay, and a nay? Supervisor Neto, a nay?
I was an aye.
You were a nay, so.
And under discussion, though.
Well, it, let me clarify, you were a nay, correct? So the motion carries uh.
Or one.
Before we take, before we clear, uh take that action, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not saying I'm changing my vote necessarily, but I'm I'm willing to look look at it some more, see if there may be some issues there and I'm I'm willing to look at it.
Okay. Motion carried then four to one for reconsideration. Now on to the next action. Can you clarify that again?
So so now um for our code on reconsideration does say that the board then revisits that item right now. However, since we haven't given the the homeowner notice, we need to do that, so your action would be to set it a time certain, a date and time certain, and then direct code enforcement to provide that notice.
Our next meeting would be February eighth, so that would be the uh date certain, time certain. We can set it for ten thirty that day. Why don't we set it for eleven? I think that's what we set it for before. So if you want to take that, make a motion.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we set the hearing for the re- on the reconsideration issue for eleven AM on, was it February?
February eighth.
Eight, time cert. Notify all the parties.
Uh I'll second. And motion is second to set the date certain at uh February eighth, twenty twenty-two and the time at eleven AM. Any further discussion on that? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries five two zero. All right, thank you all for being here. I'm sorry for holding this off, but as I said, we want to procedurally make sure it's done correctly, so any decision we make is um correct and lawful. With that, um the board's going to take about a ten-minute break. We'll reconvene at ten forty AM and go to our public hearings.
Seth, how are you? Guys, yeah, I I'm glad you're doing good. I bet you have.
All right, we'll call the board supervisors meeting back to order and go to our public hearings today. The first is from the surveying department, item four A, public hearing for a public utility easement abandonment. Easement is being vacated as part of the request for a boundary line adjustment for Silver Point Partners LLC, Mark A. Presley and Carolyn Presley and Brian McNary. The property is located at Silver Point Drive. And with that, uh, Mr. Piddle, good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen and lady.
Good morning, gentlemen and lady. Um, this is a cleanup of a kind of a mishmash of lots that were poorly oriented and created. And so this is a lot line adjustment that cleans those three parcels up and makes them nice buildable lots. There's a minor, um, easement that will be before you today to abandon that we don't need a replacement of, and I recommend approval.
Okay, any, uh, board questions?
Did we open the public hearing or?
Oh, not yet.
Okay.
I looked at the map and, uh, before and after is a little hard to envision because they, it was quite a cleanup.
Yes. Yeah, this is one of the more difficult ones, but this is why they did not use to present me with before and after drawings. And so now I require at least this level.
That's why it's useful to see the maps, I appreciate that.
Yes.
All right, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment at this time on this item? Anyone on Zoom?
No.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Hold, hold up just for a second, I, I didn't catch this earlier, so I have to. Um, uh, let's, um, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second, so now discussion.
Under rec, uh, I see that First Mace Meadow Water Association, their water line, you know, is, is sitting on there. So we're not touching their, um, system, right?
Uh, you're correct.
Okay.
No, tho- those easements stay in place.
My main water line.
All right, we have a motion, second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries five zero. Now we, uh, for the action. Who would like to make the motion?
Uh, I'll make the motion then to, uh, approve the, uh, uh, the abandonment of the, uh, public utility easement on, um, said property and the boundary line adjustment and approval of the reservation.
There a second?
Second.
All right, moved by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Crew. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep. Have a good day.
We'll go to our next public hearing. This is item four B, annual refuse race rate adjustment proposition two eighteen public hearing. And, uh, Jeff. Jeff's report.
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, distinguished staff, good morning.
And you just identify yourself for the record and your presentation.
My name is Jeff Gardner and I am your Director of Solid Waste for Amador County. Uh, the item that's up for the public hearing today was, um, duly, uh, noticed in the paper. Uh, we had a meeting on November ninth where the board approved this to go out for the forty-five day notice, which was sent to the different rate districts. Uh, the packet that's before you has a memorandum. Attachment A is the report, uh, that was given by William Shone from R three, uh, which identified, um, a recommended adjustment to the rates for the four different areas, including, uh, or additionally, uh, the Pine Grove transfer station and the Buena Vista transfer station. Uh, those rates became effective on, um, one one, twenty twenty-two. Uh, the rates, uh, the garbage rates for the different areas, uh, have to be approved and we have to have a public hearing. Um, there were twelve mail-in protests that we received. I did a little, uh, I did a little summary on the front of those, which showed three were general protests. Uh, the additional one that we've gotten in over the eleven, we got one more yesterday, uh, where it was another costs were too high and five of the protests were associated with people on fixed income. Um, total, total number of, of, uh, notices that were mailed was a little over seven thousand. Uh, so we, we didn't have that much, uh, feedback from the public. But the feedback we did get, I have gotten additional, not written comments, but additional, um, comments from people that I've seen throughout the county in the last forty-five days, uh, that, that, uh, questioned why we need to raise the rates again. I, I think, uh, Mr. Shone, in, in reviewing ACE's, ACE's information, um, has shown that rates are, everything costs, everything's going up. And rate ACE's does have a, a built-in profit level, uh, which was reduced in the past year. Uh, but even, even with that, uh, reduction, there's still a need for some additional increase. We're lucky or fortunate that we qualified for the waiver for the rural county under the thirteen eighty-three, uh, bill that's out because that has added a significant cost to everybody's garbage rate statewide.
That's state legislation, correct?
That is state legislation, correct. Um, there are still are some things associated with SB thirteen eighty-three that are going to have to be implemented, but they are not impacting ACE's as, as much as they're going to impact us, my department and, and trying to roll some stuff out. We have a, a, um, item that's actually coming up probably next on the agenda after this public hearing associated with getting someone in to help me implement the stuff that's associated with thirteen eighty-three.
I saw one comment that came in that said, uh, we should have our own landfill that would lower the costs. Um, I think if anyone could look at our existing landfill that's been closed and look at the ongoing costs, well, if we had another landfill, those costs are never going to go away and the regulatory issues are so onerous. Uh, I would, don't think I'd ever recommend going that direction.
Yeah, I, I mean, on, on top of, uh, having the landfill cost, the cost of running the landfill itself, um, you know, that would just add another whole nother layer on top of our cost structure in terms of what our, what our garbage fees are. Uh, so.
Um, Jennifer, could, we see if Mr. Malinelli or another representative from ACE's wants to make any comments before we open the public hearing?
Ask them to unmute real quick.
Uh, was there going to be a vote that you were going to tally or? So how many complaints were there?
There was twelve total.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it looks like, uh, Mr. Button, well, he had his hand up, but now he does not, so.
Okay.
You have to do it, you have to.
Are they yes or no?
Like, um, uh, Paul Malinelli, Malinelli Junior is there and Mr. Button also. And we're trying to see if Johnny Plaz, uh, will unmute, so.
Well, at this time then, for the sake of time, we'll open the public hearing and ask for any public comments. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to address this item, Jennifer?
Um, hold on one second.
I will say as we're waiting, um, you're the second page of the staff report, if anyone wants to know why the, the rates are being affected. It's a pretty good, um, the bullet points lay it out. I think one of the worst is, uh, down at the bottom in two thousand seventeen, co-mingled recyclables went from a net revenue at sixty-six dollars per ton to the next year, down to about a hundred dollars per ton net expense. So, okay. Would you like to make some comments on this?
Sure.
You could identify yourself, identify yourself.
David Button, uh, with Armanino representing, uh, ACE's Waste. Um, see members of the board, uh, chairperson, thank you for having me here today, although as a non-person. I'd just like to express a little further, I know some concern has been in there about the built-in profit or alleged profit margin. It's really the operating margin that we have in the contract, which we did give up a significant portion for this last go around. Um, it's really there to set a buffer. And I know it's discussed a little bit, but it really, we have to predict where expenses are going in a year. And, and as you know, with state regulations and inflation, uh, the company never realizes that margin. We just wanted to let that be known so that people don't think we're trying to, uh, the audit on record that corresponds with this year's rate shows that the company in total made less than two percent. Um, it, it's not really there to hurt, uh, the rate payers, it's really just to give a buffer so that we don't have the situation coming in every couple of weeks. Um, other than that, yeah, ongoing costs related to China sword policy, which is the recycling market not really being available, increased legislation and all other inflationary costs, uh, we apologize, but that, that's, that's where we are at this year. Provide the same service, not better service in the future.
Thank you. Questions, board members? I, I think it's important for the, for our board members to take this information out to the community and educate people because, um, this isn't going to stop. I mean, if you look in the summary, uh, due to the complex regulatory environment, increasing mandates, refuse collection and disposal costs have been, have seen increases across California, unfortunately, more increases will be coming. So I think it's incumbent on us to try and educate the, the public out there. Supervisor Neto?
Yeah, no, it's, um, it's nothing I take any pleasure in, in doing, but I, I will say this, that the China sword policy in recyclables has hurt. Um, recyclable, uh, income that comes back to ACE's, which offsets the rates. And I heard a while back, somebody's telling me, oh, yeah, I guess one of the other orient countries over near China said they'd like to get in the recycling material business. And so China kind of controls the container market somewhat and so made them hard to get. And also they told this country, they didn't want them using China's waters, they felt it was, was, that there was going to be toxics affecting China. So basically they're, they're controlling that, trying to control that world. Um, and as far as state legislation, it seems to never end. And I'm starting to wonder in California, if they're not going to create utopia, but we just won't be able to afford to live in it. So that's all I got to say.
So true.
Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, one of the things that I would like to add is not the cost of it, but I've been very disappointed in the service that I've been, my neighbors and I have been both receiving from ACE's up in the high country. Um, we had a couple of serious snowstorms up there, but the first one that the driver refused to, uh, come in and pick up people's, uh, trash was four inches of snow. And the, the vehicle had chains on it. And when I asked their staff of what, uh, why they didn't come and pick up people's, um, it was a safety issue. Well, I've driven, I've had a class A license before in my life, I've had vehicle with chains on. And coming into my court was probably one of the simplest areas to get into. And, uh, they, they referenced the safety. Now the second storm, okay, that was a whole different world. But I've also had, uh, the driver, not flip me off, but told me where to go when I was a little bit late and he was forty, forty minutes early. So I've been very disappointed in what ACE's has provided. I've also filed a complaint through their own staff and I have not seen any action for it. So please understand that.
Thank you.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Well, I, 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 uh, this is Paul Malinelli Junior of ACE's Waste Services and, and I, um, I have not, and I apologize to Supervisor Brown to have had a bad experience. I am not personally aware of any complaint made and if I had been, um, either someone on my staff is not telling me about it, so I apologize to that. But we do take safety, uh, very seriously and, uh, you know, I, 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 I know how to drive in the snow too. And to try to stop a big garbage truck going downhill when it's loaded is, is, uh, so we err on the side of caution as far as our drivers, uh, giving, uh, inappropriate remarks. Uh, I don't approve of that, we don't approve of that and apologize for the driver that did that. And we don't tolerate that kind of behavior.
I guess, well, like I said, I, I. Well, you might want to follow up on your, uh, procedure for outware complaints and, uh, Supervisor Brown?
I just, you know, I'll, I'll answer, part of it is that I did file a complaint. This is the first time in my life I've ever filed a complaint with ACE's because ACE's, uh, service has always been, uh, you know, outstanding. I don't know what has gone on with the last six months, I don't know if I've got a new driver. Um, I had been sick at one time and I honestly was coming out in my bathrobe because I had to go put my garbage can out and I, because I always have to put it out in the morning because of bears. And, uh, the driver jumped out of his truck, came, got it. But this time, you know, that was ten years ago. But, you know, this, uh, the last six months, I have, I've seen a downgrade. And then your own staff was saying, you know, we can't deal with it, take it down to the transfer station. And that, that is not an answer that I'm paying for. So thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for chiming in and I know you'll follow up on this.
Yes, we will.
All right, any other board comment, uh, Supervisor Axe?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, a comment. Um, I know there's not a lot we can do at this point, but, uh, a couple of business, uh, persons from Pine Grove met with, um, our solid waste director and, um, um, William was also present as well. And I guess, um, you know, the businesses, uh, are really kind of being kind of hit hard or at least that, you know, they certainly feel that way. And I, um, it's just, uh, it's, it's a tough situation. And I know that they, they probably filed complaints, um, or opposition to the, the rate hike. But, um, you know, they have a limited, uh, market up there in that area. And, um, you know, it's just, uh, it's just something that, uh, is really kind of impacting them. I don't have a solution. Um, they do, but, uh, um, that may not really work. So anyhow, just for what it's worth, I, I thought it was important that I met with some business folks from that area and, um, owners and, um, you know, they're, they're strenuously objecting. Thank you.
All right, is there any other public comments? Jennifer, no?
No.
All right, I need a motion from the board then to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I'll oppose. Motion carries, motion carries five zero. Now for the. Oh, you're a nay. To, to close the public hearing?
No. Oh, excuse me, thank you.
You're a nay to close.
Losing my mind.
You're a nay to close the public hearing. So I need a motion on the recommended action today.
Uh, I'll, um, I'll make a motion to approve the rate adjustment as presented, or just.
And that's, uh, accepting the public comments regarding pre, pre two eighteen letter noticing and everything else that's included in the staff recommendation.
Yes, sir.
That's moved by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Crew to approve the rate adjustment. You know, I don't take any pleasure in increasing these rates. Um, I realize a lot of people are on fixed incomes and we've been, we've tried looking at that before. And I think our council has recommended, has, uh, advised us that we can't change the rates for specific groups, low income or anything else, just on a constitutional basis that, uh, everyone has to be looked at as a level playing field. Um, we'll continue to look at ways to try and keep the rates down. But, uh, this is not like it used to be. We're dealing with a legislature that passes rules and regulations that have really severe impacts on rates. And with, and there, there seems to be little focus from the legislature on doing anything but, um, as Supervisor Onetto said, kind of looking at a utopia out there.
Solid Waste has become very heavily regulated, especially since the climate change stuff has been put into the law.
And it is affecting our, um, transfer stations and, and the dumping that's occurring in the county. So that's another cost, a reciprocal cost that's showing up. So with that, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose.
I'll go nay also.
All right. Uh, motion carries three to two. So three of us will be held accountable for this, I guess, so. All right, thank you, thank you, Jeff.
Yes.
We will go back to our regular agenda now. Um, since Mr. Molinelli is on, we'll, um, I would like to handle the um, Community Development Block Grant with the Food Bank, but let's go to the uh, item three F first. ACES Waste Service Incorporated, discussion, possible action regarding county's franchise agreement and municipal recovery facility agreement as it relates to ongoing issues involving transfer station cardboard recycling and collection for county roads and private roads. Just briefly, I'm, I'm anticipating ACES is going to discuss this. Uh, they, they, we are, uh, Paul, Paul Senior called me one day and said that they have an issue with, it appears to be commercial haulers who are going around charging to pick up cardboard and then bringing it down and taking advantage of the free drop off at ACES. And um, so it's become a significant item for them. There's a lot of it. So they have come up with a solution here. I'll let them discuss that. And I've talked to county council. This basically is sort of something there are, there's nothing in the, in the uh, contract itself that refers to this. So this would be just sort of giving it a blessing uh, that it seems fair and reasonable that if commercial haulers are going around collecting this stuff and bringing it in and taking advantage of the, the free, that at least uh, we would charge them the going rate for, for um, solid waste, uh, which I'm, uh, ACES can probably uh, refer to what that amount is going to be. Uh, but uh, the, the other, the other item on here has to do with collection on county roads and private roads. And they have come up with some very specific language, uh, which seems to be fair and reasonable to me in dealing with ACES on, in terms of uh, supplying services for the customers. In the past couple of years, they have only come up with, uh, at least in the past year since they've had their new contract, I believe only one or two instances. One Supervisor Crew got involved and another um, Supervisor Axe, I believe, got involved, but um, it was, it was over in River Pines. Whose district is that? That's Brian. Okay. Uh, so I went and discussed it with them and that was, that was more of an issue where the, the constituent basically couldn't uh, didn't have the physical ability to get her can out. Um, in a lot of these cases, ACES has gone to smaller trucks. Uh, they've, they've, they've um, worked with the people in, in terms of getting, getting uh, their cans either out to a place where they could pick them up or out to a county road. Again, there's only a few instances where they can't, but I think they want to, would like to get something in place to try and address uh, what happens in the situation where they actually can't get in and pick this up. Somebody doesn't want to indemnify them in terms of getting their truck in, destroying their road, hitting a car or something. And some of these cases, like in River Pines, the roads are really small and tight. And a lot of people like to park on the edge of the road. So even though they have smaller trucks, they can't get those trucks in there. Uh, so what they've been asking people to do, uh, which is sort of is standard in the industry is you need to bring your, bring your, your, your card out to a public right of way. Uh, we can't drive four hundred feet down your driveway or private road to come pick that up. Um, so that's, that's essentially what this deals with here. I, I will let uh, Paul Molinelli Jr. Or Paul Senior, if he's on, address that further or Johnny, uh, to let you, give you more information if you need it. Paul Jr. Or Senior, any comments?
Uh, yes. Uh, Paul, Paul Senior is uh, uh, is, is, is not here today. So it's myself, uh, Johnny Plasse and David Deani. And I, I just want to go back to the last situation. I, I feel really uh, bad about what happened with Supervisor Brown. And uh, I, I, I'm disappointed in our crew for, for the lack of performance there. So I, I'd like to apologize to him uh, personally. And in the future, I, I would, I would welcome a phone call to me personally uh, from anyone, whether they're a supervisor or a customer, to my cell phone when you have a problem. If I don't know-
You want to give that, you want to give that on the air, Paul?
Uh, I think everybody in there, everybody in their uncle has it. So uh, my, my cell phone number is two zero nine, two zero nine, nine six nine, five four three ones. So please call me if you have a problem. I'll deal with it directly anytime of the day or night. So I feel really bad about that. I want to apologize to Supervisor Brown for his bad experience.
Well, I, I thank you, but you know, I, I did like any other consumer would do is I called up your, your front desk and that was, that's where it got to.
Right, right.
All right.
Yes.
Anyone else? We're going to go to Supervisor Nettle first.
Yeah, I had a question for county council or maybe for Jeff Gardner. Um, uh, Greg? I had a, a question. Um, if we do an amendment to our franchise agreement to allow them to not pick up certain customers if there's issues, I don't think ACES would abuse it. But if they were abusing it, could we take away this option that we'd be putting in place where they wouldn't have to service customers?
You couldn't unam, you, you couldn't take out the amendment without uh, an agreement.
We put language in there and, and that, where the county has some oversight on this, because I just, you know, I'd hate to see down the road where maybe ACES sells or something like that or whatever and you get a, you get a bad franchisee in there and they start saying, we're not, we're not going to pick up garbage here, there, here, there. I'd like to have a little, little bit of pullback if necessary.
Well, yeah, we could, we could try to work uh, amend that language to sort of give the county a little more control or at least the ability to um-
Pull it back. I don't, I don't mind doing this. It seems logical, but if it starts getting abused, I'd want to be able to say, hey, wait a minute here. We're not, you know, let's back up.
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
I doubt if ACES, and Paul could speak to this, I doubt if they've had, have an objection to that because I don't think they would abuse this. But I understand your point that what happens if the company turns over and sells to a different franchisee.
Yeah, I don't think they would neither, but I'd just like that safeguard in there if, if possible.
Maybe some meet, meet and confer language or something like that.
I haven't, I have to sort of sit down and think about it, but um, what we can do is the board can say, you know, uh, you know, give me direction to add that. I can consult with ACES and then we can bring back. We'd have to bring back that amendment language probably anyway.
Hey, could we put an appeal process to protect the customers?
Whatever, if, if the board has an idea about how you want to handle it, you can-
Well, can, can we separate these issues with the cardboard and with the delivery and take action on one? And have um, have you come back with language that might address the concerns of the board?
Yes. It's- I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I make sense.
With that, can we um, if there's any other public comment? Nope. All right. Could we handle the issue with the cardboard recycling first? If the board wants to make a motion to accept the ACES proposal on that?
So specifically the ACES proposal is to um, to ha, charge the weight, the rate for solid waste for commercial haulers?
Well, it's um-
Commercial cardboard disposers?
As they state, ACES would request the authority to implement a fee for any self haul customers bringing a cardboard over one half a yard.
Correct.
And ACES proposes that a hauler bringing over one half a yard to the transportation be assessed the same charges as if they were garbage to help partially cover the processing and handling costs ACES incurs for the massive volumes of cardboard now received. Would you accept that language Supervisor Axe?
Sure. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
All right. Moved by Supervisor Axe, seconded by Supervisor Crew to take that action on the cardboard recycling. Is there any further discussion on this? Half, half a yard, go, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Gardner.
I was just going to say, half a yard of cardboard is a lot of cardboard.
Yes, it is. But for some of our restaurants and some of those that, you know, that's kind of a interesting situation that they're, they are a commercial business and it is part of their business, but it's not like I know the, the Mace Meadows Golf Course. They, they have a bin, they have the recycle bin, they fill it up. So then they have to drive it over themselves to, you know, they fill up one of their own pickup trucks. So is that a, is that a, that would probably be over a half a yard. So it, it's just-
There, there is mandatory commercial recycling now.
Right.
The state mandates that. So um, and most, and most of the commercial businesses do, do, do that. That's one of the things that, that Cal Recycle comes annually and wants to know what businesses aren't doing that. And then they try and push us to go out there and work with ACES to get everybody on board.
I know like AIGA, you know, they have their own cardboard press and they have a commercial-
The big ones, right. The big stores do.
Right.
So the way this is set up, if they bring over a half a yard in, they would be charged for it then like normal garbage. They're going to get the solid waste charge, yes.
I guess one question I'd have is, you know, cardboard recycling, whether they'll pay for it, goes up and down. And what about if cardboard becomes a viable commodity again and, and there's, there's a time when people are stealing cardboard because it had value. And if we get to that point again, I'm, I'm wondering, would ACES take that consideration as far as the rates they charge? Or they keep charging, you know, a, a garbage rate for something now to become a viable um, commodity?
That's something they're going to have to address.
You, yes, we would, we would keep that under consideration.
Okay, fair enough.
Because right now, there's very little market for cardboard.
Yeah.
With the uh, shield that's up. So any further discussion? So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I, I'll oppose. All right. Motion carries five to zero. And with that, we'll go to the other item now, which is the collection for county roads, private roads. Uh, as I heard the discussion, the board would be comfortable if we allow county council, based on the comments that were made here, to uh, add some additional language to what ACES has proposed. So that uh, gives um, protection for the rate payers in the future and gives the county the option of uh, dealing with this.
That works.
Uh, are you clear on this coun, uh, council?
I'll, I'll um, I'll come up with the draft. I'll share it with ACES and then um, we'll bring, we'll bring something back.
Okay. Um, do we want the, the committee to look at this too, to, to bless it before it comes back? I, I think that may just expedite the process with the board if we have, I think with Supervisor Axe and I that we're um, dealing with the contract issues. So is the board comfortable with that?
Sure.
All right. Supervisor Axe?
We'd be happy to sit down with the committee and work, work out the language.
But would that be land use or just the um, the ACES committee?
I think we were like an ad hoc.
Yeah.
Dealing with the contract issue. So um, after you come up with that language, Greg, uh, possibly we can have a meeting with all, with ACES and um, that ad hoc committee.
Yep.
And then bring it back to the board.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to adjust the, I don't like to see a staff member sitting out there either, but Beth's been here for quite a while. I know she's got other duties. So uh, if the board is okay with this, we'll jump down to item three J. General Services Administration, Community Development Block Grant, Coronavirus Subrecipient Loan Request, An Update With The Interfaith Food Bank, and John has business here anyway. And uh, suggested action is to approve a loan amount of up to three hundred and seventy-five thousand to the Interfaith Council of Amater, Interfaith Food Bank for po, po, mobile pantry vehicle and the subrecipient agreement, First Amendment. Mr. Hopkins?
You read it. So I, I, John Hopkins, General Services Director. Uh, when we applied for this allocation, it was April. We didn't hear back from HCD until November. That time delay has obviously increased the cost of, of certain things and in particular, uh, the mobile pantry that uh, the food bank is looking to um, acquire. Uh, along with that, that particular vendor, I believe still requires seventy or seventy-five percent down. Uh, the food bank, uh, because of the reimbursement process here with the state of California, the food bank uh, doesn't really have the ability to carry that kind of money forward for that period of time. Um, so I made a request and there's an amendment in there for you to approve as well to the agreement, uh, to allow a loan up to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, that eventually will get reimbursed through the state, but to carry that money for possibly nine months, maybe a year while they get the vehicle, as well as fronting that money, is problematic for the food bank. So that's in essence, the request. And Beth is here if you have any other specific questions about that.
Well, Beth, you might want to talk about the mobile pantry vehicle.
We, and we did talk about that back in March, I believe.
I remember. I just want to refresh her on it.
But it's, um, the price has gone up. It's about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars right now. So it went up a good chunk and I think a lot of things did over the last year because of a variety of reasons. Um, they want a hundred and eighty thousand dollars down and sixty-five thousand, then forty-five, then thirty, as it's completed. If we order this now, we'll get this freightliner. I don't know how aware you guys are, but trucks, they can take two years to get a truck to you now. So if we don't get this one in, the price could go up again the next time we try to order it. And that's what we're trying to avoid. The mobile pantry itself is a pretty much a twenty foot step van, about twenty-six thousand pounds with refrigerators and freezers on it. And it will allow us to go out um, to different spots in the community and take fresh food and um, frozen food as well as shelf stable, so that we can reach more people. Right now, um, our numbers in River Pines specifically have gone down to about um, eighteen per site when we go out there. It used to be at about forty. And I, I think that people just trying to get to this specific location on this day only is difficult for people. So our goal is if we take the food to them on a weekly basis or every other week, we don't have the schedule worked out yet, that we can, we can reach more people and we can reach more people with a better variety of food and healthier food, instead of just taking up the boxes that come from the state. Do you have any specific questions about it?
Well, you think operating the food bank is, is simple, but you, you are really doing a great job of managing the operations and trying to take the extra step to help people.
We're worried about the people that can't get to us. When we look at um, gas at almost five bucks a gallon and we think somebody's going to drive down here in something that's probably barely going to make it anyway, and it's going to cost them twenty-five dollars to come down. And then if we're open, and hopefully we are, but the food bank isn't open all the time anymore, we're losing the National Guard Friday. And um, we're scared. We just don't have the help we used to have and, and we're nervous about it. But I know we'll be okay because we always are.
Now, the food bank, um, you do take volunteers, right?
Absolutely.
And that may, and maybe something you may want to kind of put a shout out saying, hey, we need some volunteers and-
We've been up at the kiosk at the, um, the Italians put us on the kiosk for the last almost year and it's been fantastic. But people get scared. Most of our volunteers are older people and they start coming out and they start feeling good. And then Dr. Kirk comes on and tells us that there's another three hundred people that are sick and they stay home again. And it's just, you know, that, I know it's going to get better. I just don't know when.
You talked about opening up a um, a facility in Ione to distribute food.
We have it.
So you've already opened it?
No, but we have it. We're ready to open it.
Okay.
It should be open by February first. Is that a week?
The um, s, s, mobile pantry vehicle then would not service Ione, but it would still service the outline areas? Or how is that?
It would still service the outline areas, but we would probably still go to Ione. Um, we do have, we just opened a site, a closed site at the Head Start in Ione. So we have a site there, but this vehicle would have the ability to, when it's going out to River Pines or into Plymouth, come down through Ione and drop fresh produce there. We have to keep that produce refrigerated because when we get it, it's not always in perfect condition and we want to make sure we keep it perfect as long as we can. Our goal is never to give out anything that isn't good. Our goal is never to give out anything that isn't good.
And just a clarification also, it's a mobile pantry where people can pick up food they can cook.
Correct.
You're not taking cooked food out.
No, we don't prepare any food.
Yeah.
At all.
And is this going to the up country at all?
Yes, it is. It's definitely going to the up country, and I was gonna get to that. At Sierra Baptist, our distribution is probably our biggest distribution right now. And I know that those folks work really hard up there and I think they would appreciate a little bit of help. But if we're serving a hundred and twenty-six people in Pioneer once a month or twice a month, if we could do it once a week with fresh produce and frozen food that they could use, as well as the pantry supplies, I just think it would give people a little bit more. And we talked about this, the biggest reason for this pan- not the biggest reason, but my biggest reason is for the seniors. Because seniors are, uh, tough, um, they're a tough group to convince that it's okay to take a little bit of help. And, and we have so many seniors in this area and most of them are up country. I was talking to a lady when I went up to the Mace Meadows to take some food boxes of shelf-stable up there. And, uh, she said, I think the worst thing is that, you know, we, we're, it's just so cold. I said, don't you have wood heat? She said, yes, but it's propane. I go, well, that's not wood. But, uh, you know, just thinking about the things that they don't have and the things that they can't get. And if we can make it easier for them, that's what our goal is. Just make aging easier.
As you're speaking of that, I also wanna say thank you, Beth. Truly thank you for what you did for the warming center and giving me that phone call immediately as soon as you found out that the warming center was gonna open up there and bringing up the material yourself. You know, that was, that was so much appreciated.
Thank you very much, and like I said before, we appreciate what you do up there because we see it and we know. And i- it's, it's just wonderful. It's wonderful, so thank you, and we were happy to do it.
Oh, it was.
And we wanna be able to do more and we wanna be able to do better. And I think if we had that pantry and we were sitting up there and we had all this stuff refrigerated and it was on the truck, it would just make it so much better for people.
Any other board comments?
John, are you gonna pay this on the fee schedule? You, you're not gonna pay him one lump sum?
No, it's, it's over a period of time based on that, that fee schedule. She does need, she does have a, you know, February first deadline, I believe, for this.
I understand that.
January nineteenth, actually.
It's based on that, so it's incremental.
I talked to, to, uh, Sierra Wiley and, uh, this will have to come out of someplace, so it'll come out of the board budget, uh, probably, um.
Contingencies is where we're gonna need to take that, that initial one eighty. The, uh, the remainder we can put in the next year's budget.
I think, especially since there's repayment involved, this is, uh, really a great way to, to use county money to help people in the county that need help, so. With that, any public comment? Nope? I'm looking for Zoom. Uh, okay, board motion then, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the loan in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the Interfaith, uh, Council of Amador and the Interfaith Food Bank for a, a mobile pantry vehicle and the, um, sub receipt agreement and the first amendment.
First amendment.
Yep.
And I'll second that.
Moved by Supervisor Axe, seconded by Supervisor O'Nettle. Any further discussion?
Uh, the only thing I just, I hope they get this truck because I've been trying to get generators. And it has just been insane, you know? John and I were having a conversation about the generator at the Veterans Hall. And just keep waiting and waiting and waiting, and I just hope it doesn't become a COVID truck. You just don't know where it is.
This guy's got the truck. We just have to get it. It's in Wisconsin, I think.
Okay.
But he's got a pretty good handle on these. Pacific Co- Pacific Cater Truck Manufacturing is the guy that I'm dealing with, his name's George, out of, uh, Montebello. And he had a truck for us in, in March, and we couldn't make things happen as quickly as we thought we might. But he did find one again and he said, as long as we get to it.
Cool.
We shouldn't have any trouble, so I'm thinking we're gonna have it, the truck by, probably September.
So my only last, uh, question is probably for Chuck. They need that hundred and eighty by the first. Uh, how are we gonna proceed with that? Do you need something from the food bank?
No, and, um, oh, to make that payment?
Make that payment, yes.
Yes. Yeah, we're gonna need to pay an invoice of some sort.
So we can invoice you and we'll pay Pacific Cater?
No, you, you, we will, will need to pay the, pay them directly, so, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just need the, the documentation.
Okay.
All right, we have motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I oppose. Motion carries.
And a motion.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
We need to have that, uh, authorization to pay that out of contingencies too. I don't know if we have made that clear, but let's make that clear.
I'll, I'll make a motion to make the payment to the, uh, truck provider, uh, out of contingency funds.
Second. Turned by Supervisor Crew, motion by Supervisor Brown, uh, to pay this out of contingency. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Gonna move to our next agenda item or back to our next agenda item? Item three G, um, maybe that's an appropriate.
Actually, Mr. Chair, three I is, um, General Services again.
Uh, I guess we could do that, so.
It'd be nice to John if you want.
Let's take three G.
How about another break?
Well, John's being nice to me, so I gotta be nice to him, so I'll, I'll, I'll take it now.
We'll go to item three I then, General Services Administration Regional Broadband Roadmap Project Presentation.
Uh, correct. Uh, i- if the board remembers, this is one of the, uh, broadband, uh, grants that we rose our hand for through the, um, uh, our district, our economic, uh, development district, which includes five counties, Mariposa, Alpine, Toowomi, uh, Calaveras and ourselves. Uh, I have online, hopefully, is, uh, Diane Cruz, who is the consultant that was hired through this effort, and Cole Prezabella, who is the Economic Development Director for Toowomi County, to give you guys an update of where they're at on this project. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Amador Board of Directors. This is Cole Prezabella, like John said, with the County of Toowomi. Back in June of twenty nineteen, the County of Toowomi, on behalf of the five counties John described, went for an Economic Development Administration Cares Act request. We received the funding in April of twenty twenty-one at five hundred thousand dollars with no match. That's a significant thing to remind everyone, is no match, uh, across the five counties for these funds. Those funds were to do a broadband roadmap, more specifically, to really get our five counties in line, ready and prepared for both the state and federal funds that were imminent and then also be able to assist those internet service providers that are already within our region or those that are ready to expand within our region or come to our region, um, really understand the process and help them along. So we put out an RFP. We had a few responses. NeoConnect was our best primary response, and we're really excited to have Dian- Diane Cruz on to help us kinda lead this effort. And as an aside, we did get a secondary subconsultant of the California Forward Youth Leader Advisory Council, and they're specifically assisting us with additional outreach, um, outside of what NeoConnect is going to speak about. But California Forward is specifically focused on our youth, so under eighteen, and additionally, the seniors within our communities and sixty-five plus. And in fact, we have been putting out a survey, we have about nine hundred responses across the five counties, so we're getting a good response. We're gonna push a little bit more here, coming up with webinar, webinars and some more final pushes in businesses, which, um, we'll talk about. But California Forward, we might do an amended agreement well within our budget between NeoConnect and what we've already done with California Forward for additional outreach to harder-to-reach demographics within our region. We're finding that, um, fifty-five percent plus of the respondents are making over a hundred thousand dollars, and that's not necessarily representative of our community. So really excited about what we've got going on. There's a lot to share, so I'll let Diane take over and give you this update. Thank you, Diane. Go ahead.
Thank you, Cole. Uh, good morning, everyone. Hopefully you can see my screen.
Morning.
Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. Well, Cole, thank you for the introduction. My name is Diane Cruz and I'm with NeoConnect. We're a consulting firm that works with local governments on broadband planning. And the pandemic certainly shared, um, showed a bright light on the need for better broadband services throughout the U.S., especially in rural parts of, um, our country. What I'm gonna talk about today is, I'll just, uh, give you an update of all of the broadband planning activities that have been underway and a timeline, as well as, uh, what you could expect from us in terms of a report and deliverable. We'll talk a little bit about the current broadband landscape in Amador County and what can be done and what other communities have done. And the good news is that you all are well ahead of this process and, um, with a broadband roadmap, you should be able to align your needs with the funding that is, uh, available through the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as the infrastructure bill that just recently was passed. So from a, um, you know, good news standpoint, your timing is, uh, great to have your broad- broadband roadmap in place so that you can, um, potentially apply for funding to solve some of the challenges that you have in the county. So we started the project in September of last year, and the work that we have done, um, so far is in the latter part of last year. We laid the foundation to do the study, and so that involves gathering GIS data and anchor institution information where you have, you know, key stakeholders in all of your communities. And, um, we pulled the research on what your existing services are within the county, as well as, you know, what actual speed test data is telling us in terms of what people can not only subscribe to, but what they're actually getting for broadband speeds. And then we're mapping existing fiber optic assets and other assets in the five county region to see if we can leverage some of this asset, these assets to further expand broadband capacity within each of the counties. Um, then after identifying what the current needs are, we have done a gap assessment of where, uh, we believe there are priority areas that, uh, do not have sufficient broadband service today and what those capital costs would be to build out fiber to every premise and business within, within the county, as well as perhaps some, um, interim middle mile fiber to some of your key locations. Um, we are currently, as Cole mentioned, we have a number of outreach activities underway. Um, in addition to the surveys that Cole discussed, we are also conducting webinars in the first two weeks of February where we will offer an opportunity for the, uh, public to engage in this process, talk about what current services they have today, what they can and cannot do with their broadband, uh, infrastructure and where there may be gaps and areas for us to focus on. Uh, we're identifying, um, what all of the counties have in place in terms of policies and ordinances that are broadband friendly and that can help facilitate better broadband infrastructure and facilitate lowering the cost of implementation of broadband infrastructure. And so, uh, we are expecting in the January, um, February timeframe, which is where we are now, um, by the end of February, we will have a draft report with our recommendations and strategies of how you can potentially leverage partnerships and funding to build out better infrastructure within the counties. Um, this is a map of Amador County and, whoops, let me back up, sorry about that. And, um, these are the areas that, uh, we are showing that there's no service. And, um, this blue line, if you will, is existing fiber that was, uh, built by SCENIC. SCENIC is, uh, an entity that has built out fiber to the schools and libraries. And this fiber is often referred to as middle mile fiber because it connects, uh, large portions of the state and it also connects those locations in the state to what we refer to as internet supply or where there are internet hubs, um, typically in major metropolitan areas. Um, to get access to internet supply is very similar to building a water system where you can't have good water supply and water system distribution if you don't have access to a good water supply. The same thing goes for internet. You need to have access to these major internet hubs that are located in major metropolitan areas. And, uh, the way the pricing works to get access to these internet hubs is the large companies like Frontier and Comcast and AT&amp;T typically, typically charge what is referred to as backhaul um, in transport costs to internet hubs, and these are based upon a mileage basis. So if you can reduce that mileage by building out your own middle mile fiber, the cost for backhaul transport and access to internet supply is diminishing greatly, which then facilitates a better, uh, broadband model for many of your service providers. So the blue line is existing fiber. The red, um, that you see is proposed fiber that SCENIC is, um, has proposed as priority routes. The state of California is investing in middle mile infrastructure. Um, they have set aside six billion dollars for better broadband services part of the American Rescue Plan Act. And they have identified the red, um, routes as key strategic routes, um, within Amador County. Um, the yellow line that you see here, or orange line, depending on how you see it, um, is existing fiber from CBIN or VAST Networks. VAST Networks has, um, this fiber is available to service providers to lease, as well as this, um, blue line. Um, and so that's, good news is that we do have, um, some fiber within the county and we'd like to see more. Um, let me go to the next.
Yes? Could I ask you some questions on this map, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so, um, it looks like the, uh, Highway forty-nine corridor has existing fiber. Would that be for any internet service provider to use? Or is that specific providers that put it in and it's theirs?
So both the SCENIC network and the CBIN network is available for service providers to use.
Okay, and then the, uh, the red, which I guess is proposed, running up Highway eighty-eight all the way to the end, from one end of the county to the other, um, would that, that will be available to any service provider as well when that goes in?
Yes.
Okay. And, and then, um, are there going to be like hubs or connections along the way to branch off or, you know, um, last mile type of, uh, um, construction or?
Mm-hmm, that's a great question. So the answer is yes. So, uh, we are working with the committee to identify, uh, existing anchor institutions that could potentially be what we refer to as carrier nu- carrier neutral locations. And, um, they, they can sometimes be placed within existing government or school locations, or they could also be placed within a hut or a prefabricated building. Um, but it is good to have access to this fiber in several communities throughout your county so that the service providers can then, um, build out last mile facilities to homes and businesses. So to answer your question, the answer is yes.
Okay, um, also a couple other, um, considerations is, uh, the Highway eighty-eight, is there any, um, eh, plan to, uh, to branch to the city of Ione? Because that's a major population center and there, there is a state highway, I think, uh, Highway one forty something.
One oh four or one twenty-four?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
For, for some reason, and, um, or is that something that would be part of, you know, a fi- a final plan? Or would that be last mile? I, I don't know, it's just, there's a lot of people that live there and, um, going right by them.
Right, yeah, that is your most, um, populated, um, part of the county. So the map that I'm showing you right now is kind of your picture of today, so it's mapping your existing assets and what is planned. And then we will take this and we'll further expand upon that. And we'll talk about other areas where we think it would be wise to put in middle mile fiber optic infrastructure. So to your major, you know, population centers, but also to key locations throughout the state. We are meeting with Caltrans, who's also a potential partner in solving broadband challenges. Caltrans has a number of capital improvement projects planned and they are looking at putting in conduit along with some of the projects that they're proposing to build. So Caltrans might have a, say, a road widening project or they may be doing some work on the road, on the major highways and roads. They also have a need to connect, you know, stoplights and traffic lights as well as, there's a number of other applications that they would like to have fiber in place along major roadways within the state. So we are working with Caltrans to identify what projects do they have planned? You know, do they have a plan to put in conduit when those projects are being underway? How can we identify other areas within the counties that would benefit from middle mile infrastructure? So that will be part of our final roadmap, if you will, is we'll, we'll take these existing and planned projects and we'll expand upon that to.
Are you soliciting? I'm sorry, are you soliciting input from the public or from elected officials? Because I do have some other suggestions, the Highway 16 corridor in the Plymouth. And that's a Caltrans road, at least for now. And you know, something that'd be helpful.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Continue.
I think, so we will be soliciting input from from citizens and from you all, if there are key areas that you could see benefiting from middle mile infrastructure, we're working with Caltrans to put in shadow conduit. I think that's very welcome. So if there are suggestions that you have, please feel free to share them.
Okay, we should probably schedule a meeting in the near future then.
That'd be helpful. And something else, I think, with this supervisor on Edo, like that map you have up there, it'd be nice if you showed like the highways on it and maybe the towns. I think it'd be very helpful.
Okay.
And I know like, I'd be kind of, I think where the middle miles going would be, I'd be real curious to see what we could put out there because like, you know, a lot of our towns are not served very well and there's a lot of businesses there. You've also got Shenandoah Valley, which are a pretty major winery area. And there, you know, some of those areas are unserved, basically, or minimal if they have it. And I know last time, there's a lot of, when I think they did the CBIN, I think that was done in a hurry and probably not well planned. And quite honestly, I'm not sure how much benefit the CBIN fiber has been overall.
We're just about to start our outreach activities with the service providers. And so I will ask them if any of them are using the CBIN network for backhaul and transport. I should say too, that our goal in this project is to engage with the service providers and provide tools for them to, you know, potentially apply for grant funding, work with the local governments on improving broadband and engage them in this process and not necessarily to replace them, but to have the counties act as facilitators so that further investment can be made in the county's broadband, working with partnerships with the service providers, Caltrans. We also have a meeting with PG&E to talk about potential joint build projects as they're burying a lot of their infrastructure. As fire mitigation, there may be an opportunity to put in conduit that could be used for broadband service.
Diane, we have a question from supervisor Brown. Yeah, this is supervisor Brown. One of my curiosity questions is, are these going to be independent loops or are they dependent loops as far as the fiber optics goes?
So I'm not sure what your definition is, but let me take a guess. Is your idea that that's built in a ring so that we have some self-healing capabilities? Is that what you mean or?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So ideally, it would be good to be able to design middle mile fiber so that it is designed in a loop so that if there's a fiber cut or if there's some type of an outage, that there would be another way to reroute around that. And, you know, ideally, we would like to be able to design the network so that there are loops and we have self-healing rings. But I think what we need to look at also is just getting fiber to some of these areas. And, you know, the biggest expense of building a broadband network are these long middle mile routes. And so, you know, our first step is to just get fiber to locations. The second option is to build redundancy and resiliency within the network so that we have another way out for sure. But, you know, this is based on cost.
That's just one of the problems. I live up in the upcountry and volcano, you know, somehow their area and stockton gets sabotaged and so we'll have outages and they don't have any self-healing in that aspect.
Yeah, that, that is always a problem. And I have a client of mine who's located in western Colorado and the fiber optic cable is located near a shooting range. People shoot at the fiber optic cable and they don't realize that it brings everything down. So I absolutely understand the need for resilient networks and building, you know, capacity for rerouting around outages. And just.
Diane, this is Cole first of all, I just, can I add one note there?
You absolutely can. You're cutting out a little bit, Cole.
Diane. The one thing I wanted to add in, if you can hear me, is that I've been enjoying the middle mile advisory committee meetings and the broadband council meetings. And one thing of note work as a potential backhaul and leasing it through the state as a short potential way to getting this middle mile started. And second to that is when you do look at the future planning of what they're, they're talking about for the middle mile, there is redundancy set up into it in terms of, there's a, a middle mile line running down the middle of 49 through all of our counties. And then each of the highways going up and over would be connecting to 395. So we would have redundancy through the state middle mile with all the different intersection points. And what we'll talk about eventually in the future of exchange point. So, yes, that that would be the long-term goal through the state with the middle mile network. But yes, we should be considering that.
I think we got the gist of that. Thank you, Cole. I will say too, I looked at the preliminary preliminary results of the survey and we asked people, what is the most important thing as it relates to your broadband service? Is it too slow? Does it break down? You know, is price the most important thing? And we're finding that making sure that that broadband connection is always available and that it doesn't go down is the number one need currently that we're seeing from the survey results.
Okay, Ms. Cruz, this is Richard Forster, board chairman. Why don't we let you complete your presentation and then follow up with questions if there are any?
Okay, that sounds great. I'll, I'll go through this quickly. I know that you have a full agenda today. And so one thing I wanted to point out, and now we're talking about last mile services or services that are available at homes and businesses. And there are several standards in terms of what is considered served with broadband facilities. The California PUC has a definition of 10 by 1 megabits per second as being served where you have broadband. That's a really low benchmark. The FCC has a standard of 25 by 3, so 25 megabits per second in download capacity and 3 megabits per second in upload capacity. What we found since the pandemic is that is just such a low benchmark. Other countries are so much further ahead than we are and that we really need to have a higher goal of getting better capacity and throughput to our citizens. The state of California has a goal of 100 by 100 by the end of 2024. What we have found is that there's 2,000 people in Amador County that have no wired internet provider at all. There's 4,000 people in Amador County that do not have access to the FCC standard of 25 by 3. 20% of your citizens do have access to what's called the gold standard or a gigabit service, which is 1,000 by 1,000 megabits per second. Comcast offers service in some limited areas within the county. What we're finding in terms of what you can do and what I often say to my clients is that there's a full spectrum of what can be done. And we have a number of projects that we can point to in different models that we can point to of how various local governments have facilitated better broadband. On one side, you can do what's called the do everything plan. And that is building fiber to every home and to every business, every anchor institution and building out middle mile fiber infrastructure. The bad news with that is that it's very expensive, but it can be done. And I will say that there isn't a better time for it to be able to be done than now because there's so much funding that's been available through the American Rescue Plan Act and through the infrastructure bill, which I'm going to talk about in a second. So there's currently funding that is available that you could impact several generations to come by leveraging the funding that's available today. You really do have the ability to potentially do a do everything plan, if you will. On the other side of the spectrum, there's a do nothing plan, which is just essentially relying on the existing service providers to build out infrastructure within the county. And then what I like to refer to is there's 100 or so do something plans. And they range anywhere from putting together good policies that are broadband friendly that reduce the cost of broadband infrastructure. You're currently creating a roadmap. That's definitely something. As soon as you start talking about improving broadband services, you start piquing the interest of the service providers and the private sector. And so having a roadmap and having a plan is a great thing that you're doing right now to prepare you for potentially applying for funding. You can build out middle mile infrastructure, do that in partnership with Caltrans, with power companies, with cellphone companies. And you can put together priority projects and a list of projects that you would like to build out last mile infrastructure. And with that, you could partner with the private sector providers and leverage the grant funding that's available today. Before I go into the funding projects, let me just talk a little bit about it's a no-brainer that you should put in a dig ones policy and many of the counties within the region have a dig ones policy. And it's just essentially a policy where whenever there's work that's being done in the public right of way or when a road project is underway and a trench is open, that you notify service providers that they have the ability to put in conduit. What I would encourage you to do is go a step further and create a shadow conduit policy. It's similar to a dig ones policy, but essentially the county and/or the municipalities would put in shadow conduit whenever there is work being done along key routes that we will identify in your plan. So we'll provide your key distribution routes where if there's an opportunity to put in shadow conduit, we suggest that you do that and that you have a policy that you would just pay for the incremental expense of the conduit. And so what that does is instead of paying, you know, in a mountainous region, the cost per foot to build conduit or put in conduit is anywhere from $25 to $50 per foot to do, you know, trenching and boring and put in conduit. When you have a shadow conduit policy in place and when the roads are in a condition where you can put in shadow conduit, the incremental costs are about $5 to $7 per foot. So you dramatically reduce the cost of building infrastructure that can be used for placement of fiber optic facilities. A lot of my clients have done this and just over, you know, a year to two years' time, they've built, you know, miles and miles of shadow conduit that then can be used potentially as leverage in partnership with the service providers. We already talked about middle mile infrastructure and how important that is. And the reason why it's important is because it reduces the most expensive operating expense for internet service providers, that backhaul and transport costs. And so we'll put together a list of additional routes that we should consider putting in infrastructure. And this information will be provided as a toolkit for service providers. And we'll certainly get their input on other areas that should be included in that design. We, we talked about the existing fiber that's in place and what is proposed to build from the state. These are the proposed routes currently that the state is discussing. And this changes actively, this discussion is an active discussion. And so these maps are a little bit outdated. There's additional fiber that will be expanded from these maps that have just been announced in the last couple of weeks. But we'll include that in the roadmap of what's being proposed. And then we'll discuss key routes that we think that you should continue to build fiber to expand your middle mile options. I talked about how there's a lot of money that's available and many of you are probably aware of the local fiscal recovery fund that's available for counties and municipalities that's been allocated through the ARPA Act on a per capita basis. In addition to those funds where you can use broadband, use those funds for broadband infrastructure. The EDA has also seen broadband infrastructure as a key component for economic development. And they have an additional $3 billion that's available for broadband infrastructure. And we've worked with a number of communities across the US. Just recently, Eldorado County applied for grant funding through the EDA to build out middle mile fiber infrastructure. And this grant, or the grant that you use to pay for the study was through EDA. And so they are a great source to potentially target grant funding to build out middle mile infrastructure and building fiber through your main communities, connecting your businesses in industrial parks and such. There's another large fund through the Treasury Department's Capital Improvement Fund. A large portion of that will be allocated to the states directly. And then the states will decide how that additional 10 billion should be available for broadband infrastructure. And so that information is again underway. The state of California is talking about how they will divvy up that funding for middle mile and last mile services. And then there's also money that's available in the ARPA program for tribes to build out broadband. In addition to that funding, the state has set aside $6 billion in broadband infrastructure. And that program is what we've been talking about. And there's a portion of that that will build out middle mile infrastructure. The state of California has targeted 3.25 billion to build out fiber between communities for middle mile networks. And then $2 billion for last mile broadband connections. What is currently underway as well is the federal infrastructure bill or the jobs act. And there's $65 billion that's set aside for broadband in that fund. So this is really a once in multi-generation opportunity for you to impact generations to come. And I will say that the problem that we're solving today is broadband. So we're building out fiber infrastructure to provide better broadband services to citizens. But within the next five years, you will also need fiber infrastructure for self-driving cars, self-driving trucks. There will be smart city applications. We'll need better infrastructure for cellphone service for 5G capacity. And so the, the problem that you're solving today is broadband. But by building fiber, you're also potentially solving and setting up your county for some of these future applications. That will need fiber optic infrastructure in order to, to facilitate some of these other applications. So our next steps, I mentioned that we have several webinars that are scheduled in the first two weeks of. in the first two weeks of February. We have those activities underway. We are beginning our outreach with the service providers with Caltrans and PG&E and we're finishing up what it will actually cost to build out these middle mile routes as well as carrier neutral locations and last mile priority projects. So at the end of the day, you will have a report with our recommendations by county and we will hopefully provide a number of shovel-ready projects that you could then leverage the grant programs that are available both at the federal and state level to improve broadband. We expect to have a draft report by the end of February and we will provide a draft for all of the counties to be able to weigh in and provide feedback. And we'll take that feedback and then incorporate that into our final report, which will be available in March. So with that, I'll open it up for other questions and further discussion.
This is Chairman Forster. I have one question or observation, I guess, on your what can be done to improve broadband and policies slides. It kind of looks like counties and cities are out there on their own and we're going to have to be looking for grants. So is part of the equation you looking for solutions or helping us find those grants?
Yes, so we will, in addition to identifying what the recommendations would be and what the capital cost of implementing those recommendations, we will align those recommendations with the various programs that are available. And we will, you know, let you know details of when they're due. What's what part of these projects are eligible for this funding? And we will, you know, provide you with a roadmap and plan for you to leverage all of this funding that's available so that you can implement the roadmap. We'll also identify.
Definitely last mile like a lot of places in Amador County. And if I stay there, I doubt if I'll have have broadband by the time I die. I guess when I'm in a care facility, I might have it.
I have a question for you. Somebody sent me an email and they're talking about how one problem is some of the service providers are not competing with other service providers possibly. Especially in the like also AT&T and Comcast do not use a CVIN resource. And didn't know if you had any, any idea in what's going on there.
So we'll we'll do a deeper dive into what the service providers are currently doing as it relates to CBIN. We've worked in other areas of the state and we know that the CBIN network is used heavily in other parts of the state. I'm not sure about the central Sierra. I've heard that in another county meeting that a lot of the service providers are not using the CBIN network within your region. And we'll get to the bottom of that and try to identify what the issues are and why that is the case or whether that is the case that the service providers are not using that. What we have heard is that oftentimes the larger companies like AT&T and Comcast and Frontier do not provide access to their existing fiber networks, maybe on a dark fiber basis. They typically just provide lit services for backhaul and transport and they're often very expensive.
That might be part of the problem right there while these underserved areas. If people are not, if companies are not working for the benefit of the consumer, and I understand they got to make money, but if if they're they're not playing nice in the sandbox, hey, the person is getting hurt as a consumer. And I understand profit maximization, but there's there's there should be some middle ground where hey, the companies are making some money, but yes, they're also providing a good service that society needs. And I'd like I'd like a little more information on that if you could get it for me, like what the what the issue is there.
Sure, we will definitely look into that. I think what we've found then too is that middle mile infrastructure also facilitates competition. So instead of having to rely on the providers that have perhaps built fiber, but they're not sharing that willingly or they're arguing too much for it, maybe they enjoy a monopoly. Having the state invest in middle mile infrastructure facilitates more competition as well as access and it reduces the transport cost. So again, I cannot emphasize how that strategy has improved broadband services throughout the US by putting in middle mile infrastructure that then facilitates competition. But we'll find out what the current issues are with the service providers as we begin our discussions with them this week.
Well, thank you.
Any other board questions for Ms. Cruz?
Not at this time, but we would like to meet with you.
Now, I don't see any direction from the board today other than trying to facilitate a have staff facilitate a meeting with Ms. Cruz and and Cole regarding this issue. Do we have several supervisors who've been appointed to work on this issue?
Supervisor Crew and Supervisor X.
So Ms. Cruz, if you could work with our staff and try to get a meeting to talk about this issue more with with our supervisors.
Yes, absolutely.
Any further discussion then? I think that concludes. Cole, I appreciate you being here. Diane, appreciate you being here. That's it for for us, I believe. Yeah, very good presentation, a lot of information and I do appreciate your your being on Zoom and joining our meeting today.
Thank you very much.
Any closing comments from you before we go on to our next item? Hearing none?
Thank you, Cole. Thank you, Diane.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we're done with all the general service items right now. So we will now go back up to item three G, amateur fire. That is an appropriate name, amateur fire safe council on the agenda instead of safe. But approval of the chairman's signature on two letters of support relative to the Fire Safe Council's application with the Sierra Nevada Conservancy and with CalFire. So the letters are in our package.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown, um, the amateur fire safe council has been working extremely hard trying to get these grants and and fire breaks. Supervisor Neto and I have attended quite a few of their meetings. And they're pushing as hard as they can to to continue to help the county out in any way they can. So I would very much ask the board to, or actually you, to sign these letters to forward these for the applications of stewardship for the Sierra Nevada Conservancy.
It it looks like from the description that because we have twelve communities that are designated as firewise communities that they are higher in the eligibility for for grants?
Yes, they are. It just opens more doors, you know, when you're in a firewise community because it's showing that you are putting the step forward. And the Fire Safe Council has been proactively trying to get more communities involved as they can. And it only takes five people to start a firewise community to to make up a board.
Oh, we have two grants here. Is there any further discussion? Two, uh, comes two requests for letters from for both these grants with chairman's signature. So if there's no further discussion, any public comment?
Um, we do have Amanda Watson. Go ahead, Amanda, if you're ready.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for the consideration for a letter of support for these two grants. And thank you for for the kind words as well. And we're avail, I'm available to answer any questions about either the Community Fuel Break Development Project or the Stewardship. The AMCO Stewardship Project and just a brief description of both of those, as you guys, I'm sure have looked at. The AMCO Stewardship Project will be working on nine parcels that are BLM land. And we're hoping that those can be an anchor point for future future fuel breaks. And the AMCO Community Fuel Break Development is a slightly different type of project than what we've gone after in the past. As mentioned, these would would be catalysts, the firewise communities would be the catalyst for these. And the reasons why we're focusing on firewise communities is because the community members come together and develop a plan. And within this plan, they may designate that a fuel break will be developed. And so really what we're trying to do is help foster that action from the community level and then be there to provide that support to get work done on the ground, which is always our our biggest driver is getting that getting that work developed on the ground. And I would like to just put a shout out if anybody is interested in developing a firewise community or learning more. We do have a board member and we're working with AFPD to help people guide through that process. So thank you for your time and I'm available for any questions.
Amanda, one question, the supervisor Forster. I know when we had the tree mortality issue, BLM was not always the easiest to work with. But it appears here that you already have gone through and created the environmental documents. So that, will that tend to foster a better relationship with BLM?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I also, I want to note that we are working with BLM. They've been a good partner in this in this project. We've developed the environmental compliance work, which is about a year and a half long process so far. And I will say that I do, I do believe that with, as we do these projects and we open up those lines of communications, I do think that we'll start, you know, fostering those relationships that really help us get to the, get to those issues more quickly. And we we did also, we were also awarded a coordination grant that will be kicking off in the next couple of weeks, actually, that will be, will be really trying to address where those pinch points are, the lax of, the lack of communication and start to streamline those. So when it comes to fire, fire safety, fire mitigation in the county, we'll hopefully start developing those lines of communication to address those issues that that you're talking about. So, yeah, I think, long and short of it is, I think, yes, we're working towards developing those relationships that will start addressing those issues in the future more quickly.
Thank you. Any other board questions? Any public comment? And I need a motion from the board regarding letters going out in support of both of these grants.
No move.
I heard Supervisor Brown first and Supervisor Neto on the second.
That's fine.
To approve chairman's signature on these letters going out in support of the grants. And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Most carries five zero. Thank you and thank you, Ms. Watson.
Thank you so much.
Over to item three H, discussion possible action regarding the salaries and benefits of the board of supervisors, elected officials. And the action would be to waive the reading and schedule for adoption at a subsequent board meeting. Uh, I think you've, this is another one that Mr. May has commented on and sent information. But board members, discussion?
You know, I have a question for county council. You know, this is just to send it on to be approved at a later meeting, right?
So this will go on consent. So this is to approve and you put over on consent.
Okay.
Will get adopted, but um, not at a, it'll be on consent.
You know what, I'll just, you know, I I'm good.
Supervisor X?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair and board members, um, we approved the, or gave the, uh, I guess the approval to, um,
Premium Pay or what?
For the two thousand dollar payment. But when it came to longevity, this was kind of new to me. Couple of things come to mind. I I think we were talked to, uh, half our constituents. They, they, they would not encourage longevity, you know, they would kind of think of it as the antithesis of, uh, term limits. I'm not saying I'm for term limits either, but I don't know if, I don't think I can support that. I I understand supervisor pay is a, is an issue. And I I really think that we should have public input on on that whole process. And I think that, you know, this is a hard job and I think the people that do it do a good job and they work hard at it. But I I think it's a concern that we're approving these benefits and not getting, um, public input on that. And I think, I think we should do that. I have no problem with the, um, the one-time bonus or payment. Um, you know, we worked through COVID and, um, you know, it's a, it's a legal use of that and we also talked about it in open session. So I can support that part, but I I right now the longevity, no. And and also, if you're going to have longevity for elected officials, it probably should coincide with their terms rather than, um, what county employees are receiving, that's all.
Made a comment about, uh, we should have public input. I mean, that's why it's on the agenda today.
I understand, but, um, I I think just supervisor compensation overall. You know, I think a lot of people think, oh, well, it's a part-time job. You don't really do anything. I've heard that, um, but I I disagree with that, but at the same time, I think it's, uh, um, this kind of opens us up for, uh, a lot of, um, you know, criticism. All the optics don't look good. Sorry.
Well, technically county council or supervisors, county employees?
Yes, it's sometimes they are treated as employees and sometimes they're not. Um, other supervisors, elected officials across California do get longevity pay and others don't. It's.
But did we, Mr. Ely, did we approve the longevity for the other elected officials too?
Yes.
So I'm just trying to be consistent with with what we've done. So, um, any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we do have someone waiting on Zoom when you're ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Catherine, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, thank you. This is Catherine of it volcano resident. I want to say that I am retired from three and three and a half years of county service and twenty plus years of state service. During my time in government, I had annual performance reviews, whether I was a rank and file person or in management. And at least in state service, the step increases that were given at my agencies for longevity were all dependent on having a satisfactory performance review. So I would suggest a couple of things regarding this. One is that you look at comparable counties and see how they handle it. And also, I think the board of supervisors should start to do annual full board performance reviews preceded every year by goal setting that have specific measurable performance measures that you can look at at the end of the year and see if you've met them. And then if you've met them, perhaps you deserve a raise. And I would suggest that some of those measures could be things like a, you know, increased number of miles repaved, reduced numbers of unhoused people, agencies fully staffed, an increase in the amount of grant funding concerned, full compliance with legal settlements, which is a little bit of a bug with me because I helped to negotiate one the county is not complying with, and full implementation of the county general plan on which, you know, many, many hours and many, many dollars were spent and the county isn't implementing it. So as a taxpayer and as a former government employee, I object to the notion that people should be rewarded with more pay simply for being in office for a specific amount of time. And if you did decide to do something that was time-based, I think basing it on, you know, maybe the end of your first term and the end of your second term makes sense, but five years. you know, maybe the end of your first term and the end of your second term makes sense, but five-year increments make no sense. And also, I, I really think the taxpayers of Amador County deserve for you to set solid goals and then demonstrate that you're meeting them before you get a raise. Thank you.
I would agree that with the concept of some goal setting, um, and addressing those every year. But let's face it, you don't meet every goal and we have a lot of restrictions coming down from the state that, um, affect us budgetarily. Let's say we're, we put a goal in that we're not going to increase refuse rates at all. How can you do that when, when that's being regulated by the state to death? Supervisor Neto?
You know, I have a problem with elected officials getting longevity pay. And I'm not, I wasn't against employees getting premium pay. I had some heartburn over electeds getting premium pay. Um, not saying it's wrong that they do, not saying it's right that they do, I just, I just had some heartburn over that. But also, um, in response to Catherine's question, I think the ultimate decision makers on elected official's job is the voters. And if the voters don't like the job you've done, you're out of there. And that's, I think there's no higher authority than that. So, I don't see where putting in another, another layer of bureaucracy on electeds is gonna really do much, but I think what the voters say does a lot.
Right, any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, um, Catherine would like to comment again.
Okay, Ms. Evitt?
Thank you, I, I, I'm not surprised by Supervisor Neto's response. I, I would put forward, however, um, you know, having watched elections around here for many, many years, that most people really don't know what the supervisors do. And many people don't think you do a lot of work. I happen to know that you do and you spend a great deal of time at it. But I think having, um, establishing annual performance measures for the county with you as the heads of county government would really give people some, um, something to look at come election season to see how you're doing. And I realize that there are forces beyond your control that come along and you might not be able to meet a specific performance measure. But in evaluating how well you did, that could be taken into account. And it could also be taken into account when you set the performance measures. I just think it would be a good step toward, uh, a more professional version of Amador County government that is more transparent and more accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Jennifer?
No.
I'll just say one thing, Richard. I think the voters in Amador County, unlike a lot of large metropolitan areas, voters in Amador County, um, they pay attention. And a lot of them, most of them have a pretty good idea what's going on in this county. So, that's all I have to say.
Well, I'm gonna, I just look at this as being consistent on the longevity increase, uh, the other elected officials receive it. Uh, board supervisors are no different than the other elected officials. Um, you fight hard, you try to do your job. If you, if you, uh, serve your time, then you should be compensated, just like the other, other elected officials, employees are compensated, so. Um, with that, any further discussion?
Well, a, again Supervisor, uh, Chairman, uh, Forster, I, I do think supervisors should deserve, you know, their salaries to be, um, analyzed and, um, perhaps get raises or get raises. And I think that there should be a process for doing that, rather than us giving it to ourselves, that's all.
Well, we, we've basically given up giving ourselves a raise when we froze it.
I understand that.
We will not get any more raises in the future.
We can give it to, you know, citizens group to make that, you know, to come back with recommendations.
I'll let you give it to citizens.
Okay.
Uh, we, we froze it and that's the way I'd like to leave it, but there's other considerations on the table, like what we have before us today, so I'm looking for a motion at this point.
I would make a motion.
And you speaking to the mic there, Pat?
I'm still looking for the. Computer waved, my computer went and reloaded on me. I would make a motion that we approve the salaries and benefits for the board of supervisor elect officials, waive the reading and schedule for adoption at the subsequent meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Supervisor Crew, second by Supervisor Brown. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Supervisor Neto?
Nay.
All right, so motion carries three to two. Um, I would like to, um, Sierra Wiley, look at Ms. Evitt's suggestion. I think it's good to have a, a goal session every year and, uh, would be appropriate. It, it, yeah, you can say it's, uh, going to, to look at our performance, but, um, I'm just concerned that people are gonna say, you didn't achieve five out of 10, but those five are so heavily regulated or controlled by things, um, out of our control. Uh, so I think that needs to be part of the equation too, but I do appreciate Ms. Evitt's comments on that. So, with that, I'm gonna find my place on the agenda again. I think we're up to, um, item three A. Assembly Bill 1519, and this is discussion and action on a signature of support by the chair for, um, the bill that deals with subsidies to transport biomass to biomass plants. And, um, who requested this to go on the agenda?
I did, I can't find my, um.
I think I asked you to be prepared to speak on it, so.
I did, but I, in my board packet, I don't see the letter. I, I put a draft letter in there.
Mm-hmm.
And, um.
So, if we look at the draft letter, any questions for Supervisor X?
All right, thank you. Yeah, so basically, um, this is a, uh, a bill to subsidize the, um, the, uh, transportation of, um, biomass to a biomass facility and what they, they, they actually refer to it as biomass energy facility, which we have had one here in the past, actually a couple. Um, I wanted to, uh, you know, support that, cause I, that's, that's a real problem with making biomass, um, economically feasible, uh, either, you know, adding a subsidy to the power generation or at least subsidizing the transportation, cause transportation is a big part of it. In addition, I, I had a paragraph urging that the definition of biomass energy facility be, uh, broadened to include other industries that, um, would benefit from this, that, uh, still provide a green use of the material or a greener use, uh. And, uh, they could include facilities like, uh, that produce biofuels or chemicals, mulch and other soil amendments and then even hydrogen gas production. And, um, there is a person that's, uh, up at, uh, he's, was planning on working or starting a business at the, uh, the old cedar mill and he wanted to do some of that kinda work. So, I think that it shouldn't be just limited to traditional co-gen, that's all.
And we also have a support letter in there from RCRC?
Uh, yeah, they, they wrote a, I guess, an example letter and, uh, that should be in there. But, um, uh, I wrote, I wrote one for us, just a one-pager, so it should be in there.
Yeah, I was just pointing out the, the additional support from RCRC, so, which, um, we are a member of, so.
That's where I found it, on the barbed wire, so I saw.
Yeah, I appreciate you writing the, the letter Supervisor X and the explanations, so. With that, is there any further discussion? Any, uh, Zoom?
No.
Then looking for a motion from the board?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Moved by Supervisor X, second by Supervisor Brown to approve signature of the chair on a letter in support of AB 1519. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Most carries. Last item on the agenda for today is the minutes of, uh, January 4th, special, let's see, special meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes, um, actually, we're January 4th, special meeting December 31st, 2021, and January 18th, 2022, special meeting.
I, I had no corrections on the two special meetings, so for December 31st or January 18th. I'll move their approval.
On January 4th, did you have any corrections? Of the regular meeting?
Uh, yes, and I gave them to, uh, to.
Other than the date of January 18th, 2021.
Yes, is that, should that be the 4th?
No, it's supposed to be the 20th second.
Okay.
Okay.
Got that, Jennifer?
Yes.
I just have one minor correction on January 4th, so Supervisor X made the motion. Is there a second? Moved by Supervisor X, second by Supervisor Brown to approve the minutes with minor corrections of the two special meetings and the regular meeting. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I had a couple, um, issues on the January 4th. On page six, it would be, it would be the, um, oh, as far as I'd like to have, um, it was as far as, uh, salary, salary increases for elected officials. I just wanna make a change in the way we're basically, like stated in my reasoning for my voting no. And I'd like that, that be included.
It's gonna be short though, correct?
It'll be short.
Okay.
Um, also, on page eight, we heard the appeal from Mr. Brian Matthews. It says it was moved by Supervisor X, second by Supervisor Forrest, with a three to two vote, uphold the findings of code enforcement.
Yeah.
Should that maybe be a two to three vote?
Yes, and, uh, it failed, the motion, the motion was made, but the vote failed, so.
Yeah, yep.
That was one of my, my.
Well, the motion was to uphold, so it should probably stay like that, but the vote should be two to three, which would show it fails. Or maybe put in there somewhere, the motion failed, the vote shows that, but.
Very good. You, you caught that too Supervisor.
Yeah, I, I caught that too, so.
Okay, with those, um, changes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Most carries five to zero and, uh, we are done with our business for today, so, um, thank you very much.